We're going to kick it off. May 3rd, 2023, Meeting of the Anaronda County Board of Health is now in session. Please silence all electronic devices at this time, and I want to introduce Ms. Toni Geddon, who is the Acting Health Officer. Ma'am, the floor is yours.
Good morning.
Morning.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, good to see you all. We're going to go through our official Board of Health presentation that we do twice a year. I'm excited to share with you all what we're currently working on, some things that you will see in our following, the budget presentation following this presentation. And so we'll save time for questions for you all, but please, there's a full presentation inside of your packets. Hopefully you've received them. And if there's something after the fact that you want to follow up with me on, happy to do so. We're going to get started. Okay, so our mission statement has actually been updated slightly this year, so I'd like to take a moment just to acknowledge that. The first part of the statement, "To preserve, promote, and protect the health and well-being of all people in Anaronda County. My advancing health equity in Anaronda County has changed." So we did not before have a statement about advancing health equity inside of our mission statement. During our strategic planning process this year, one of the things that we did was look at our mission and vision, and the senior leadership team felt as though equity needed to be added to our statement. I just want to take a moment to acknowledge all the wonderful people that have joined me here today as a part of this presentation that make all of the work that you're going to see today happen. All of our directors for each of the bureaus are here, as well as our Communications, Finance, and Office of Assessment and Planning, and my wonderful partner, Sean Kane, who is our Deputy Health Officer for Operations, is also here this morning. Also want to recognize partner agencies, the Mental Health Agency, who's sitting over here to my left, their Executive Director, Adrian Meckler, and I'll be presenting some information from the Mental Health Agency this morning. Of course, I'll be able to call on Adrian if there are specific questions for the Mental Health Agency. Also acknowledging our continued partnership with the Anaronda County Partnership for Youth and Families and Pam Brand. Okay, so a little bit about the department. We currently have just over an $82 million operating budget, 819 employees, and a number of different locations throughout the county, and continuing to try to really grow our footprint, not necessarily in brick-and-mortar buildings, but you'll hear a lot today about our work to really become more mobile and to operate in different areas of the county. So I wanted to first start this presentation with acknowledging, over the last three years, at least while I've been a part of the department, we have started each and every one of these meetings with COVID-19 updates. I am very excited today not to actually start with a COVID update and to tell you about where we're headed next and what we've learned from COVID and what our next steps are. So the first thing I wanted to highlight is our strategic plan. We went through a strategic planning process towards the end of last year and the beginning of this year, and we're focusing on four things: reinvigorating our workforce, which I think, like everyone, we are struggling with the labor market, but one of the big pieces here is really the burnout and really the toll that the pandemic took on health department staff, which is a little unique. And so making sure that we were prioritizing our workforce and how do we make sure that we're getting the best talent, but also keeping the wonderful folks that have been with us for some time and have stuck with us particularly through the pandemic. Enhancing our infrastructure. I think we all have noticed that public health infrastructure could use some support and some additional work, and so making sure that we, as a department internally, are also focusing on those things is really important. Deepening and expanding our community partnerships. This is another thing that we've learned as a direct result of COVID, that we really needed to have strong partnerships with community-based organizations, the faith-based community, and we want to expand those. We also were able to learn where we don't have great partnerships and where we would benefit from being able to reach out to folks, so we're working on that. And as I mentioned in the previous slide, advancing health and health equity. So really looking at where are the health disparities within the county and coming up with ways to focus on those and creating plans to focus on those. So the first thing that I'll touch on this morning is a direct result of what we've learned from the pandemic. And so many of you were able to attend our Healthy Communities Program, open houses in different parts of the county. And so I really wanted to make sure that you understood kind of what's next, what is the Health Department continuing, and where have we really downsized quite a bit to now meet the needs of where the community is. And so with our Healthy Communities Program, we're really looking to serve the most vulnerable populations in the county and making sure that we're getting out to them where they are and continuing some of the things that we started during COVID and expanding the services, so not only vaccinations, but other services that we can take out into the community. So here's just a couple of statistics on what we've been up to. I'd like to thank our partners with Aging and Disability. We've done a lot of work in senior centers, different senior housing, homeless shelters, recovery houses, food pantries with corrections, vaccinating homebound individuals, which is something we did not do before, and transferring vaccines to providers in the county. And so this is just a little snapshot of what we've been able to do since we met with you last, and these are the things that we want to continue. We want to continue making sure that we're actually going into homeless shelters and providing services there. We want to make sure that we continue providing homebound residents with services and things that make it easier for their families to actually access services and not go through, which will make through a lot of really big hoops to get folks out of their homes. And so if it's easier for us to come to you, we'd like to continue to do that. And then I think one of the most successful partnerships that we've had with our Healthy Communities Program is our partnership with the public school system. So the Anaronda County School System has been really tremendous to work with throughout the entire pandemic, but what we were able to do this year was grow from COVID vaccines to offering 7th grade vaccines, kindergarten vaccines, influenza, and so that meant for us, looking at schools in different areas of the county geographically and also looking at Title I schools and community schools where folks are facing more barriers, taking time off from work to come to one of our clinics might be more difficult, and getting out there and vaccinating in schools. And schools has actually been the most popular way to vaccinate children against COVID-19 when we look at the numbers. For all of the different things that we offer, the school clinics have by and large been the most popular. So we want to continue that, and we'll continue working with them to do that every year. So where's the program going in the future? Here's a list. I won't read them all to you, but other services that we're able to take on the road, for lack of a better way to explain that, and some of the locations that will be doing that. So Lula Scott, we've been there for quite some time, continuing that, and looking at other health department locations. So there are multiple health department buildings. We don't always co-locate services, so there may be a building for behavioral health. And we say, okay, well, what else can we bring to our location that makes it easier for residents to access it? And so our goal is really to keep a team that's able to respond as we're looking at emerging pathogens. This year, for instance, we were looking at IMPOX, formerly known as Monkeypox. I will give you an update on that. Marburg and polio were things that we were following, and this is the team that would respond to any emerging pathogens in the county. Little update on IMPOX. With this response, we were really fortunate to still have this Healthy Communities Team because they were able to set up the first mass vaccination clinic in the state for IMPOX. We were able to test people in their homes. We were able to set up clinics to test in our health centers, and so what we really didn't have any issue with, of course, we were trying to figure out what was happening and the contact tracing, and all of that was relatively seamless because we had this team and this level of expertise, and that's something we want to keep. We don't want to have to stand up a full team again if something were to happen. We've always done things like contact tracing in much, much smaller scales, and we'll talk a little bit about that later on, but keeping this, a portion of this team operating to respond to things like this is important. The next program I'm going to highlight is our Community Health Ambassadors Program. This is, again, similar to our Healthy Communities Program, something that grew out of COVID that we are able to change and modify and continue to use. So our Healthy, our Community Health Ambassadors are a program of the Health Department partnering with community-based organizations and providing funding for them to hire individuals to go out into the communities where they're trusted and known to talk about various health issues. So this initially started with getting people signed up for vaccines, myth-busting and understanding vaccinations, but we've expanded it this year to cover mental health. So this group, you'll see a list of the trainings that they've engaged in this year, including mental health first aid training that was made possible by the Mental Health Agency, youth mental health first aid training, equity, diversity, and inclusion, and training folks on how to use Narcan. So these are things that we're now able to have seven community organizations with health ambassadors out in the community talking to people about, talking about the mental health resources that exist in the county, how to access them, and trying to decrease some of the stigma in these communities around mental health. So here's just a quick timeline of where we started with this and where we are now. Again, looking at health disparities, and we've engaged a little under 35,000 residents since this program's inception. And so I think this is one of those tools where we can continue to grow it. It could cover other chronic diseases. I hope that in the future, COVID is not one of the things that they're covering, and we're able to pick up other health disparities and health outcomes that we'd like them to focus on. Here's just a little bit about the organizations and what they're doing and the capacity building with those organizations as well. So I will do a COVID-19 update. It'll be short. As you can see, our case rate is down quite a bit, but I wanted to make sure that you all understood the difference in our case rate data now. So previously, all testing was primarily reported to the state, right, before at-home test kits. So now, when you test at home, there's no obligation to report it, so when you're looking at case rate data, it's not as accurate as it used to be. So what we have been doing for the better part of a year is partnering with DPW, our environmental health staff, really work to make sure that we're getting our wastewater tested at seven different treatment plants twice a week throughout the county. And so what that means is that we're able to look at the amount of, when you're talking about particles in water, it's SARS-CoV-2 that you're looking at, and those particles in the water, to really understand our case rate in a different way and understand where we're seeing an increase because people shed it in their fecal matter. And so we test the water to have a good understanding of what the case rate looks like in the county, if we're seeing increases or decreases, and that information is found on our website. And we're really looking at kind of three different levels based on the number of particles per liter. I won't bore you with all the details, but it's all on our website to take a look, but just wanted you to be aware of how we're currently looking at that, and that's in partnership with the CDC. One of the things that we're definitely most excited about is the decrease in hospitalizations. So we're looking at, as of last month, an average of seven patients in the hospital per day for COVID compared to where we were last January with 196. And our hospitalizations were often in the hospital capacity, and the infrastructure in the hospitals drove a lot of our decision-making and what we needed to do to make sure that that institution or those institutions were really able to continue functioning. And so we're very excited that this is where we are, a little over a year later. An update on vaccinations, bivalent boosters. We are still continuing to promote them, provide education in the community, provide the vaccines. We want to make sure, and did an excellent job of getting people to get their first dose and complete their primary series. As people have had multiple boosters and have come into the, in contact with the virus more, we're definitely seeing a decrease in interest in the bivalent booster. It is something that is still very important. Recent changes to recommendations, now if you are immunocompromised or over the age of 65, you should be getting another bivalent booster if you had one this fall, so making sure the community is aware of that and continuing to vaccinate as much as we can throughout the community. Okay, and then the, I believe this is our last COVID slide, but we talked about how COVID had come in and become a leading cause of death. We really hope that this year it falls off of the list. We'll see, but as of now, we're at 47 deaths for the year, and in looking at comparing 2020, 2021, and 2022, we've continued to see decreases, but we're hoping that this year with hospitalizations being down, cases being down, we will see a dramatic decrease, and hopefully COVID will at least fall much lower on the list than third. Okay, I'm going to get into some of the programs and our, the work within our bureaus in the Health Department. The Healthy Anaronda Coalition is an inter-agency collaborative that is led by the Department of Health, and so we've got community-based organizations, faith-based institutions, hospitals, federally qualified health centers, and multiple county government agencies that participate. And the real goal here is to make sure that we're partnering and thinking about the ways that the community wants to see their health improved, and so our priorities for FY23 are mental health and obesity. So there are two work groups that work on both of these, and so you'll see, I'll touch on mental health quite a bit today, but you'll also notice that we're wearing green pins because May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and so that work group has been working really, really diligently to put together a campaign and also highlighting the events going on throughout the county this month. So you can see, there's a calendar on our website that we're sharing and spreading to make sure folks know what's happening, and this means highlighting other organizations' work as well. Our Healthy Eating and Acting Living Work Group is really focusing on a number of different things and collecting different resources for the online platform. We had Healthy Anarundel Day on April 7th, which really was more of a week than a day, but we worked it out. And again, working to create calendars to share these events. And so these work groups are meeting on a regular basis and continuing to push this work forward. So next, I wanted to get into our Office of Health Equity and Racial Justice, and this office was created in 2019 after the Health Department and the county executive declared racism as a public health issue. And so what do we do with this office, and what do we mean when we say health equity? So the definitions are here for you to take a look at, just so we're all kind of working off of the same understanding of what we mean when we say health equity and racial justice. But we also wanted to provide a little data and apologies that it's, this is the most recent, which is 2019, but we're hoping that it's updated soon, but looking at things like ZIP codes and comparing it to ED visits and low birth weights and comparing it to the percentage of that particular ZIP code that is a minority, the percentage of that particular ZIP code that may not have a high school education, and the percentage of that ZIP code that fall into a certain poverty level. And so what we see is that these are not necessarily coincidental that they align, that you're seeing a heavier burden of low birth weights or ED visits in communities that are more impoverished or heavily minority. This map is one that we continue to bring back to you every time that we present. We think it's important because as we present several other maps throughout our presentation, I'd like you to keep in mind the darker areas on this map because the other maps that will be looking at health outcomes often are dark in the same areas, right? So when we're looking at a map that's covering asthma or we're looking at a map that's covering another health condition, we see that it's disproportionate in these areas, and that may be because of income, that may be because we're looking at a high, a higher percentage of minority residents, or we're looking at a lower educational level. So these are the things when we're looking at health equity and talking about that, that we want to make sure, no matter what your education level is, your income level is, you have the same opportunities at health as everyone else. Here's another one that I think really drives home why we do the work in the areas that we're working in and looking at your life expectancy, right? These areas are not very far apart, but if you live in Brooklyn, it's likely that your life expectancy is about 15 years less than someone that lives in Arnold. And so understanding when we say we have a food pantry in Brooklyn, why that is, why we're at certain libraries, why we're at certain schools, is looking at those who may have less access or increased barriers to getting to those services. And so we want to make sure if it's geography, education, income, that we're trying to eliminate as many barriers as possible. Okay, our healthy, our community health workers are a part of our Health Equity and Racial Justice Office, and they're really important. So they're going out into the community and understanding what the needs are, hitting certain ZIP codes, and so we're able to get some really great information. They do surveys with the community to understand what people need. So food support has continued to be identified as a need for residents, housing, mental health. So when we look at these, it helps us as a department not only to get information out to the community, but us to understand what the needs are and what we should be providing. And this is just a short clip of Alexander Bravo. He's got one of the coolest names, but he does a fantastic job in our community. And we also host a monthly community meeting that's open to the public. It is a hybrid meeting, so you can join us at the Health Department in person, or you're welcome to join over Zoom. This is something that started during COVID to get information out to the community, and we've kept it going. We've decreased the frequency quite a bit. I think at one point, we might have been up to weekly, but here's just a list of some of the topics that we're covering during those meetings and trying to get information out. So we'll cover new programs that we're offering. We'll have other presenters from other agencies or other organizations come out and share their resources, and it also gives the community an opportunity to ask us questions, to provide feedback on the way that we're delivering services, or to give us their suggestions for things that we should be doing in the future. But I invite all of you to stop by, join Zoom, and participate in our monthly Health Equity calls. They're really very good. The next topic is our Gun Violence Intervention Team. And this team, again, was created in 2019 after the county executive declared gun violence a public health issue, and how do we address it? And so the creation of this team and the decision for it to sit within the Health Department is one that we actually spend a good deal of time explaining. What does it mean to say that gun violence is a public health issue and not only a public safety issue? For us, it means that we're looking at root causes, social determinants, and using the data to drive, hopefully, what is not only responding, but prevention. That's really, really key and important in the work that we do, and creating a layered approach where we're using various evidence-based practices to try to approach the issue. Our Gun Violence Strategic Plan, I asked them to print the full version for you all in your folders. This, as we move forward and have more interventions and more programs coming out of this office, I want you all to have a good understanding of what we're doing, why we're doing it. And so I think the strategic plan really lays out a lot of the direction that we're going in, and that was released last summer. And where we're really kind of working now is in our Goal Five: Disrupt Cycles of Community Violence Through Engagement with Community Members. So I'll be touching on that a bit more. Here's a little data for the city and the county. So looking at gun violence as both homicides and suicides, making, that's an important thing that we want to make sure everyone understands, is that we're not only talking about homicides or contact shootings. And when we say contact shootings, we mean a non-fatal shooting. We do see a disproportionate amount of contact shootings in Annapolis City, and that's why we've chosen to start there for a pilot program that I'll be talking about shortly. We also see that about 42% of the homicides within the county occur in Glen Burnie. So when we're looking at what are the other areas that we need to be working in, Glen Burnie is one that we'll definitely be prioritizing. And one statistic that I wanted to make sure that we highlighted today is that about 47% of the homicide victims in Annapolis City between 2016 and 2022 were between the ages of 14 and 24. So when we're looking at children and very young people, I think this also calls us to prioritize working on that. Looking at, in many cases, what is an absolutely innocent loss of life is something that we want to make sure that communities are not experiencing, and gun violence is not only the experience of the person who is injured or killed, but that family in the community, that trauma continues on and perpetuates in many, many ways. And so these are things that we would like to work on. Again, so when we're looking at two types of gun violence, looking at suicides and homicides, we find that we have a disproportionate amount of suicides happening in older white males, so about median age of 55, or about 80% of the suicides in the county. And then about 58% of the suicides in the county occur in black males with a median age of 29. So we're looking at young black males and older white men as the two kind of target populations for various interventions coming out of the Gun Violence Task Force. So a little more data on where we are as a county. So this graph covers suicides, homicides, and the total. So we did see an increase in 2021 and a decrease last year, and we're glad to see that, but we want to sustain that. I wouldn't call it a trend after just one year, so there's more to come there. But what we have seen in Annapolis is that people are surviving the shootings, but we're, we've seen more contact shootings. One of the more recent interventions from this group is our Gun Lock Partnership, Pilot Partnership with the Anaronda County Public Libraries. And so we launched on April 13th, and as of last Friday, we'd given out a total of 918 gun locks in three libraries throughout the county. So again, when you're looking at these locations, they're heavily driven by where we are seeing gun violence in the county. So Bush Annapolis Library, Eastport Annapolis, and Glen Burnie were the three that we started with. We are hoping to expand this. This was made possible by a grant with the Governor's Office of Crime, Control, and Prevention, and so we're excited that hopefully now 900 more guns in the county are stored in a safer manner, and so we look forward to continuing this. We also hold community meetings. They're coming up in June, June 1st and June 2nd. We'll have various events happening in the county, but we had a community meeting in March that was really, really wonderful. So if you have an opportunity to watch, it's linked here, but we had panelists, and so I think everyone left that meeting, and there was one particular statement that stood out. There were lots of great things said about why gun violence is a public health issue, the public health approach to gun violence, but Dr. Kyle Fisher, who works in a number of different ERs in Maryland, talked about the fact that he has cared for, and I think he's been doing it for about 10 years, a lot of different people who have attempted to commit suicide. He has never cared for a person who's attempted to commit suicide with a gun, and that is because they are that successful. And so when we're looking at these interventions and thinking about it, I'd like you to keep that in mind, is that people say, well, sure, they'll come up with another way. Yes, there are other ways to commit suicide. Guns are a very lethal method in order to do so, and so I think his statement has stayed with many of us, and think about that as we're moving forward with various interventions. So the work groups for this particular team, there's a data work group. We've done a lot to, for you to see the graphs that you have and partnering with the, both the Anaronda County and the Annapolis City Police Departments, and making that information available to the public. I think we're one of very few health departments that actually produced this data and put it out, so it took a lot of work, so I want to send a lot of thanks to that team. Also our Environment Work Group, so developing community surveys, working on the community meetings, and our Policy Work Group, who did a lot of work around extreme risk protective orders and the campaign we had around those. So the next thing I want to highlight is actually one that will be a part of our budget presentation, but we came to you in October and shared with you that we had an assessment of Annapolis City done by Cure Violence Global, and they are an international organization that works on gun violence in a number of different countries and here in the U.S. And so they came out and they interviewed various partners, people impacted by gun violence, organizations working in kind of wraparound services, county agencies, city agencies. They walked the neighborhoods, they talked to residents, and the whole point of this assessment was to determine if Annapolis City was an appropriate place to have a Cure Violence Global model implemented. So that means bringing a violence- So that means bringing a violence interruption program to the city and what that would look like. And their assessment results showed that it was a good location. And there's a few different factors that they look at. Is the community interested? Are the various government agencies on board? Do you have support? Do you have capacity? And so, during that assessment, we really had an excellent opportunity to get a better understanding of what's happening in the city and then to work towards adding a request for funding to have a Cure Violence Global Pilot Project start in Annapolis City. And so, that's one of the things that is a part of the County Executive's Budget Presentation to you all this year. And so, I wanted to touch on a little bit of what a violence interruption program is. And this program, and there's various ways to do this, but essentially, there are kind of three pillars of violence interruption. Street outreach, programs and skills, and coordination. And so, this means hiring individuals from the community and having them work where they're known and trusted. And they have to have those relationships. I can't really stress enough how much that was one of the things that Cure Violence drove home time and time again during our visit, is that these need to be people who know the community, who know the people in the community, who are from the community, doing this work. And that might mean that these are people who have a past of committing various crimes. It might be people who have been victims of these crimes. And so, having that conflict mediation, mentorship, resource navigation is really important. But also, understanding what the wraparound services are and being able to refer people out. Violence interruption is not a catch-all. They don't provide all of the services necessary. They are very specific in getting into communities and understanding where conflicts are rising, where retaliation might be coming, and understanding who to talk to and what to do in those situations and de-escalating those efforts. And really also getting the community involved in a way that they take a stance against violence in their communities. Right, gonna switch gears and talk a little bit about behavioral health, or a lot of it about behavioral health, and our local Behavioral Health Authority, which is comprised of the Mental Health Agency and the Department of Health. So we are working on plans right now that will hopefully soon be finalized and priorities for the LBHA. And looking to have communities embrace behavioral, behavioral health and mental wellness as key components of overall wellness. So again, that stigma associated with accessing mental health services and understanding what it means is really important. And we want to spend a lot of time working on education and prevention. And prevention, I think, I've talked to each of you probably a little bit about the youth and what we're seeing with increased mental illness or the need for increased mental health services in the youth. And so, when we talk about prevention, things like clubs, things like other social engagements and programs that they can participate in, those are ways to prevent mental illness and promote mental wellness. And we want to make sure that we're doing a little bit more in those spaces and prioritizing prevention more in our work. This is a very busy slide, so I don't expect you to read it all, but this gives you a snapshot, this is not finalized, of the work that's happening in the areas that we're hoping to move into and what will happen in each of these groups. So again, looking at education, prevention, quality, equity, and access. Another topic I think I've discussed with each of you is the access to behavioral health and what that means for folks, some of the wait times, some of the limited access for folks who English is not their first language, or limited access for children. And these are all things that our local Behavioral Health Authority is working on, increasing and understanding the demand within the community. We wanted to highlight this because it's been in the news, and this was really important legislation that came out of this body. So our Suicide Prevention Initiative for firearm retailers. So as of a month ago, month and a half, the federal courts came down in our favor, saying that this is something we could do, which was a reasonable thing for the county to do to protect life. And so, we have been able to make sure that these materials are distributed again, and we'll be working on compliance efforts throughout the year. So we're really excited to see this back up and running. Wanted to highlight nine eight eight, which is the new suicide and crisis lifeline. But also to make sure that everyone understands that our Anaronda County Crisis Response Warm Line continues to operate twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And I'll touch on some of the data associated with our crisis response work. We're really excited to see a national number exist as well, but wanted to make sure you all knew what the numbers were to call. Please share that information. Our Behavioral Health Team. So as I mentioned, May is Mental Health Awareness Month. And so, here's just a couple of different things that are going on right now. The Community Family Fun Day hosted by the Mental Health Agency, the Mental Health Awareness Month campaigns that are going on through our hack organization, and then our own campaign, Be Green, Be Seen, on sharing pictures. So we'd ask you, if you're dressed like Ms. Fiedler today in green, take a picture, tell us what you do to promote your mental health and share that with us. And that's something that we'll be sharing across our social media, as well as our Be Well AA campaign. Another new partnership, UnioHealth. This is a wellness app. And we have entered into a partnership with them in collaboration with the Mental Health Agency to have self-care tools, educational assets, and resources. And we're hoping that this reaches a younger population. We will get the information around who's accessing, not who, but where this information is being accessed, which parts of the county, and a little demographic information on who's using these apps. So we're excited to see what this brings. Again, just a little bit more on things coming up. If you can participate, May sixth will be the kickoff for the Family Fun Day with the Mental Health Agency. Couple of our Health Department programs strengthening families. This is one that won an award in 2021 because we were actually able to stand this up completely remotely, providing dinners to the families and having them participate from their homes. And now, we're doing this in a hybrid fashion, and we're really glad to see this continuing and having these families participate. Our Well Mobile, we've expanded the number of days, still offering telehealth services and also in-person, various days of the week at different locations, and incorporating, as I mentioned before, other Health Department services into the Well Mobile. And making sure that folks are getting referred out. Opioids, wanted to provide some data. One of the good things that we've seen recently, again, I'll hold back from calling it a trend just yet, is while we're continuing to see overdoses, pretty much almost exactly a year-to-date, the number of two hundred and twenty-seven overdoses and looking a year ago at two hundred and twenty-nine, the number of fatal overdoses has decreased. And so, I think one of the really important things that I wanted to share with you all is the number of folks that are using Narcan. In calendar year 2022, less than thirty percent of fatal overdoses were administered Narcan, while nearly ninety-five percent of those that survived their overdose had Narcan onboard. And so, the importance of our harm reduction work and getting Narcan out in the community, trainings for Narcan, it saves lives, and we want to make sure that we're getting it out there as broadly as we can. It was recently approved as an over-the-counter medication, which is wonderful. It also presents a couple barriers if it was cheaper for you to have it as a prescription than it is to buy over the counter. So again, it's important for us as the Health Department to work with community partners and to figure out new and different ways to get Narcan out into the community. But I think it's really important to understand that it is saving lives. Our opioid intervention team, we're looking at potentially making a few changes here. And the changes are not really who's working on it so much, but it's how we're looking at it. We see polysubstance use pretty frequently in the county. So when we're doing toxicology reports on overdoses, what are we seeing? People more than likely have more than one substance in their body. So we want to make sure that we're casting as wide a net as possible. And that if you think of yourself as a non-opioid user, that you don't think that this is, we're not speaking to you. We have had instances where fentanyl is a part of a drug that, you know, you're not necessarily an opioid user. You thought it was cocaine, and it's not just cocaine. And so, having people really understand that even if you think you weren't taking an opioid, please have your Narcan. Please administer it. Looking at emerging trends, things coming. We had a question about xylazine, I think raised from Sarabian, and what that is. We're not really seeing it in the community at this point. It goes by a few other names, trank, trank, trank Q. It is a sedative for animals. It's often added to substances to make them more potent or to make the high last longer. And then you'll see people sedated essentially, right, for long periods of time, and it can be dangerous. At this point, we're seeing it, probably the closest location is Philadelphia. We have had it here in the past, probably two years ago, if I'm not mistaken, or a little more than that. And so, we'll continue to watch that. Our Hub and Spokes is really making sure that we're getting out more programming and getting providers, primary care providers and others to provide medication, opioid, medication for opioid use disorder is important. And so, our Hub and Spoke, we try to get people into our program and then figuring out how we get them out and referred to the community. Just a little data on our safe stations. And then, our harm reduction work. As I mentioned, Narcan is a big part of that, but it's not the only thing. So making sure that we're providing things like clean needles for people and an understanding of what the resources are and how to get into recovery when they are at that place. We touched on Narcan, so I will continue to move forward. Here's just a little bit on the referrals that have been made out of our harm reduction teams. So looking at getting people into treatment, into healthcare, into housing. These are really important things that folks are often struggling with, and we want to make, help them to address various social determinants. Okay, we're really excited this year because seven days a week, we are reaching out to non-fatal overdoses in the county. And so, there's been an outreach attempt to one hundred percent. Doesn't mean that everyone responds to us, but we have been able to reach out to everyone. And so, trying to get people to engage in treatment or recovery, sharing harm reduction materials is important for our survivors. Wanted to get, skip to the next slide. This new vehicle in partnership with the detention centers, making sure that we're in compliance with House Bill 116, which requires medication treatment for opioid use disorder to be provided within all correctional facilities, and that's all three medications. This vehicle will now be on the road. And what it means is that the infrastructure that it takes to have a brick and mortar, and we do have that inside of our detention centers, this was a really creative way. And I think we're the first jurisdiction in Maryland to do this, but to get this approved by the DEA and many others, to be able to take this vehicle into our corrections facilities and provide that medication and making sure that everyone in all of our facilities within the county has access to all three medications, even without a full brick and mortar setup. Very excited to see this starting. I think we just got the vehicle last week. Crisis Response System Services. I wanted to make sure that you all really understood that we're still at a hundred and twenty percent higher than five years ago in the averages that we were seeing. This is, continues to be a really important service that we're providing within the county, and they're responding to all sorts of different things in different ways. And this, I think we all see this. You're all hearing about it, but I wanted to make sure you understood the data here. And we still continue to see services for children in high demand.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, please.
Do you mind if I just? Thank you. That last slide, I just want to, are those data points monthly? Is that two thousand nine, two, two thousand nine hundred sixty-three calls in a month? Wow, okay. Thank you.
Okay, here's a little increase specific to children. So again, just data for you all to, to have and understand. Those calls have increased. Mental Health First Aid Training. This is something that the Mental Health Agency is doing a lot of in many different ways, including community members, other county organizations. And so, wanted to make sure that we highlighted this. If you have a need for that, can attest, the trainings are fantastic. They did this for our Community Health ambassadors, and I think it's been, it's just a wonderful resource to have in the county. They've also done it with school health nurses in the past. So we use this service as a partner as well. Looking at jail diversion, again, another important aspect of our Mental Health Agency's work. I'm gonna skip forward a few here. I did want to stop here. We've had a, we've seen an increase in things like syphilis and gonorrhea, and all of our data is impacted by the state's security incident. And so, we don't actually know the full scope. But one of the things that we've seen over, think about a, hmm, close to a ten-year period, we had three congenital syphilis cases. And that means a newborn is exposed via their mother. Typically, we can get ahead of that by prenatal care, testing. But we saw three cases in a year last year, which is, again, a little bit out of the ordinary. And so, making sure that we are getting ahead of that and understanding this work, providing more testing in the community is very important. Okay, I'm not going to hit on that one. I did want to touch on our Brooklyn Park Healthy Food Pantry. Again, as a part of our budget, continuing the work here is critical. We've served a little under four thousand families. And one of the things that we have shared here numerous times, but haven't been able to come back to you with the full report, is our South County Food Assessment, which we wrapped. And these are preliminary results. The full report will be available. But when we were working in South County to figure out what was happening, what the needs are, hunger is the biggest concern that we're seeing. So it's not necessarily, things like transportation and cost and diversity of food are also important. But we do see a number of residents that are really concerned with hunger in their families. And residents are traveling a good deal of time to get to foods. So I'm gonna skip over our healthy start. There's also a request for maternal mortality information. And so, I wanted to share, this is for the United States. We reached a recent peak in 2021, and this is data that was released probably two months ago, seeing thirty-nine, thirty-two point nine deaths per one hundred thousand live births. And then you see a stark disparity amongst black women, non-Hispanic black women, at sixty-nine point nine deaths per one hundred live births. So that's about a three times higher, higher incidence. In Maryland, we see less deaths overall, but we still see that disparity. So the disparity exists, but we have a lower level across the board. The piece of this that I think is also, we can't leave out when you're talking about maternal health outcomes, are infant mortality. And so, these are the six leading causes of death for infants. And prematurity can be tied to maternal outcomes. And so, I wanted to make sure that you all understood this and where we're seeing it. So the highest number of deaths in 2014 to 2018, Glen Burnie, Annapolis, Severn, and Pasadena. Again, those graphs that we referenced earlier in the presentation align. Similar to this graph when we're looking at infant mortality. One thing I wanted to highlight is when women are entering into prenatal care. So we do see our Hispanic residents entering in later. We see kind of a decrease. We see white women entering in earliest, black women, and then Hispanic women. We will have, there's a change in Medicaid rules for the state with the Healthy Babies Equity Act that will require Medicaid to cover expecting mothers throughout their pregnancy and twelve months postpartum, regardless of their legal status in the country. So we're very excited to see that and hope that it brings a lot more prenatal care to our Hispanic residents and other undocumented residents. What are we doing about it as a county and as a Health Department? We really want to look at having a maternal health task force started in the county. So I've been in conversations with our hospital leaderships about how to do that and what we want that to look like, exploring the use of doulas, which research shows actually really changes outcomes, particularly in minority communities, having that advocate and understanding, educational campaigns and outreach. Another new program for the Health Department that you haven't seen before is our Childhood Asthma and Lead Environmental Case Management Program. This is looking at asthma, which is the number-one chronic disease cause for absenteeism in schools, and the number-three leading cause for hospitalization in children. And so we're doing both education and providing things like HEPA vacuums and other materials to help people better, um, manage their children's triggers and understand what they are. We also see a large disparity here in black children, um, entering in emergency care, about double the rate of the general population. And then lead testing, making sure that children are lead tested is incredibly important. Um, a lot of children are not, and so increasing the amount of lead testing in the county. And we see a, another disparity here amongst Asian children. We've seen it in our Afghan refugees and some children of Indian descent. Um, spices are actually the cause. They're coming from other countries most often where lead is in the soil and being consumed here or in the pottery. And so looking to make sure families understand that and looking at that lead disparity. Again, here's a couple of graphs for you to understand that work and what we're seeing in. Dental services, I'll go through really quickly. Our Kerwin School Partnership has increased, so we provide sealants for third grade students. And next year, we'll be in 15 different schools. Uh, our REACH program, because I think this is one that you get asked about quite frequently, how do we expand this? Um, here's just a little bit of, uh, numbers on what we're doing with REACH and continuing to coordinate that care. As we see, we're glad to see that a lot of our, uh, hopefully pregnant women as of July 1 will start to fall off of this list, but making sure that our REACH program is still reaching residents that don't have access to insurance and providing them with affordable care. School health, um, importantly, the numbers that we're seeing, right? A little, uh, over 400,000 total health room visits. And then there's a breakdown of other types of visits and things that we're seeing. Also providing, uh, vision and hearing screenings in the schools, very important. And our audiology services. Uh, we've talked about our staffing in school health, so I wanted you to have an understanding. There's 350 staff members that are in school health. This is a breakdown of those who are in the health room. So your registered nurses, your licensed practical nurses, health assistants, and those who work in the evening, just so you can get a scope of how many staff we're talking about. Uh, and then we've talked also about the turnover. So we're this year having another record-breaking year of turnover. Um, so of that 350 staff members, 139 have turned over so far. And how are we combating that? I have to take my hat off to our school health leadership. Um, we have two full-time recruiters. We have offered a number of different, uh, job fairs, mailers out to every nurse in the county, every LPN in the county, um, to make sure that folks know that we're recruiting and we're trying to hire. But it is a constant churn that takes a lot of work to keep our schools fully staffed. New projects for this year, we'll be moving into an electronic health record and also partnering with Total Healthcare and AACPS to bring, um, telehealth services to two elementary schools, Tyler Heights and Van Bockland. So we're really excited about that when it launches. We'll come back and tell you more about what that means. And again, moving away from this paper sheet you see here into an electronic health record in all of our, uh, health rooms, Frontline is the name of that company, so we'll let you know. But hopefully we will have data that's much easier to pull. They do a great job of doing it all now, very manually, but we're hoping to have better interfaces with the schools and with health. And then last but certainly not least is our environmental health work. Um, they touch so many people across the county, right? A lot of our services, um, maybe you come to us. This is one that's working on your behalf very often and you don't even know about it. Um, but inspections, uh, for restaurants, a rodent control program, which has expanded this year into Annapolis City. So Eastport Terrace, Harbor House, and Robinwood are now a part of our rodent control program. Um, that's been a wonderful partnership and going really well. And our beaches program, which is launching very soon. Um, and we're getting staffed up now, but again, to protect the water and make sure that people know that our waterways are safe. And our ORV program. That's it? I will stop talking now, drink some water and see if you have any questions.
That's a, that's a lot. Um, so I actually do have some questions. Uh, and I appreciate all the different programs that you all, um, manage on a daily, daily basis. Uh, it's a huge undertaking. I'm not sure how we are as successful as we've been, um, considering the, the scope and scale uh, in which you operate. Uh, but my sort of line of question, and I think I may have mentioned this to you before. I may ask the, are you familiar with the, the state code on the Board of Health with the language?
I am, thanks to you.
Okay, thank you. I'm not sure, my, my, uh, e- either the audience or other peers, if, if we can instill that, that cord over there and project from, uh, the madam's administrative officer's laptop. I just want to draw your attention to something real quick. I think this is more about the continuity of information for me in this, in this body, certainly, uh, as well as for the public, because it's always, uh, uh, it's, well, I hear different language. And so what I wanted to draw your attention to, uh, first, there's a link, I think I sent, uh, that was the third link, it was a state code. Is that it right there? Nope, that's the, uh... All right, uh, and so if you go to section 3201. All right, right, I think that's it right there up top. All right, and I, and like I said, this is for everyone's sort of consumption, consumption. Uh, and so in this language, uh, except as provided in, in paragraph two, which we'll see in paragraph two, uh, the, each county board of health shall exercise the duties imposed by the law on the board of health. And so we're actually a charter county. The county board of health shall exercise those duties in each municipality or special taxing district in the county unless the municipality or district has a charter, which we do, and I'll get to that in a second, a provision or ordinance that covers the same subject is at least as restrictive as the provision that the county board is required to enforce, right? So that has to be in there, has to have a subject in there, uh, and then includes provisions for enforcement. And so I bring it out, uh, uh, and because I wanted to go back to the, the county code. And so if you go to section, I think the second, uh... I'm sorry, the charters, may have been the, the charter piece, and then we'll go back to that. Okay, and so now the, the state directs us, because we have a charter, and now it directs us to, uh, the county. And so the county says, uh, the Department of Health shall constitute the health officer and all officers, agents, employees under his, here's her authority and supervision. We should probably put that, uh, update that. Uh, under the authority and supervision of the county board of health. The county council shall constitute the county board of health with the advice and consent of the Secretary of Health and Mental Hygiene. Uh, the county executive shall submit to the county council his recommendation for, uh, and I'll point this out, that the county even says, the county council shall constitute the county board of health. So this is the county designating us as the board of health, right? From the state down to the county. So it is saying, we will have a, a board of health, uh, because other charter government could say, you know, we're just, not ex officio, but we're, 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 we just receive a report. But it's actually designated in our county code that we're the board of health, all right? But nothing in this charter, and I want to go, all references in this charter to the head of, or, of an office, uh, or department shall be construed as including the county health officer as head of the Department of Health. But nothing in this charter contains, shall be or held construed as affecting or, or in any wise changing the administration of the county health program. So as a health officer, you're still charged with administering and running the, the, the programs within the county's health department. So this is saying, we're not impacting that, uh, in accordance with the requirements of the state law. Uh, now if you can go to, uh, back to the, the state code, if you will. And I think it's, it's section 3202, miscellaneous, miscellaneous powers and duties. And if you scroll down, again, it states here, except as, for part one there, except as provided in paragraph two, which two says that if we have a charter government, then you go to your, your, your charter government language. The language in the charter government says that implement, it says that we are the county board of health. So just kind of mapping that out for you, so we don't lose that. Uh, so each county board of health shall exercise the duties imposed by law on the board of health. The county board of health shall exercise those duties in these municipality, and we've meant, mentioned that. So go ahead and, uh, scroll down to, uh, I think it's section, let me go to my laptop. And I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, hopefully you all are bearing with me. This is important, this is educational, and I think it's important for this body to understand uh, what our, uh, scale is. Uh, scroll down. Yep, still in the same sections. All right, here is where, in addition to other duties provided by law, each county board of health, so this is the state saying to the counties, you're still going to meet in May and October of the year, which is what we're doing right now, and, uh, coordinating any activities with the department, which this, this body, uh, or actually the, the board of health and the state coordinating those activities. And then, then scroll down. And then report to the department on any sanitary conditions of the county whenever the board considers it important, necessary to use, which, which you do if there's any sort of ailments, uh, that come up. And there is some language in here, I really want to point out, uh, a couple of things. One, except as provided in paragraph two, which in paragraph two, it doesn't state. So if it was excluding us in paragraph two, we went, at least in my mind, and the Office of Law obviously can waive if they want to. But each county board of health may set, uh, any fee or charge in con- in connection with its rules and regulations. So the board of health can do that, right? Again, this is my mind, I'm not, this is, I know you've probably read this, but I, this is more for my peers. And it's more so for you. Uh, scroll down. And here's the major piece. In addition to the other powers provided by law and subject to the provision of the law, each county board of health may adopt and enforce rules and regulations on any nuisance or cause of disease in the county. Would you consider COVID a disease?
I would.
You would? All right, so this body, in theory, could have enacted, uh, laws or provisions or things to mitigate that disease. Is that, would you, would you say that's a fair assessment, whether or not?
I would say that's a fair assessment.
Um, uh, now I know in the past, the county executive is the one that, uh, and, and the health department sort of issued a lot of policies. We gave him the emergency powers to do what they do. Uh, but my point is, the board of health has a lot of flexibility in, uh, every year, uh, at least my previous six budgets. And one of the things I wanted to draw is all we do is we get a report, but we've never exercised the authorities as the board of health. And, uh, uh, not saying we're trying to do that or change anything that's, that, that as the health officer you're responsible for. I'm simply saying, as the board of health, we have authorities there that we've never really truly explored. And I think it's incumbent, not just today, but in general, that we as a body understand that. Uh, and we have the capacity, in my mind, uh, to be able to, uh, implement things that, um... Where is the? Adopt and enforce rules and regulations on any nuisance or cause of disease in the county. So any of those, anything that falls into nuisance or disease, we can impact as the board of health, not as the county council, as the board of health. And so, uh, uh, you know, for me, I thought, I thought it was important to say that. The other thing I wanted to point to, if you go to the section 551, and I think I asked this previously, this was the county piece of it. Oh, you just go back up? Yep, in the charter, you just, I think you just passed it, it was the previous. No, it was on there, I, you saw it, I already saw it already. You just got to scroll up on that last page. If you go up to that, uh, I think the second tab maybe, maybe that's what it was. I'm sorry, that's, that's, no, I saw it on your screen when you, when you, when you switched. Uh, let me see where it's at. It said the 60 days. Or, right there, okay. So the other question I had, I think I mentioned, uh, uh, here previously, uh, when I had asked, how, how long does your acting sta- status last? And I think the, the response from the admin at the time may have been indefinite until we change or something like that. It wasn't like a specific timeline. And so, but in here, and this is more education for me, so you can correct me, or even the administration at some point, it says, within 60 days after the occurrence of a vacancy, the county executive shall submit a resolution to the county council naming of an individual, uh, uh, of the health general article of the state of code to be nominated as a health officer. So I know we had you in there as acting, uh, and, and the reason this stuck out for me, because I remember him saying, there wasn't a specific timeline. Does acting constitute the, be nominated as the health officer? And I think maybe Office of Law, it, it probably isn't more for you, more for them. Um, you know, so do we technically have 60 days to actually appoint a health officer and not an acting health officer? And that's, that's one of the things I wanted to bring up during this meeting, because, uh, this, in my mind, says 60 days. So after Dr. K left, 60 days later, we should be appointing a, maybe there's an acting within 60 days, but after that, we should appoint someone, uh, to, to be the health officer. And so, uh, I bring it up mainly for discussion, not to sort of trigger anything to say that, that, you know, we don't want you as the health officer, but more to keep us, uh, in line and in truth with the county language. And that language says 60 days, and I just wanted to make sure that was noted for the record that I feel like we should appoint a health officer within that 60-day guideline. But that's all I wanted to say, and, uh, sorry for the 10-minute spill here. Any other questions for, yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I want to thank you for going through the details of our role, um, as the board of health, because I do get that question often, um, and you've done a deep dive and explained it beautifully. Um, so thank you for that. Um, it would now be the appropriate time to ask questions?
Yes, please.
Okay. Um, so first, I just want to say, um, I, I was very happy to see that, um, you referenced maternal health outreach. That's something that we talked about when we met, um, in, in our Zoom meeting, kind of taking what we've learned about through COVID, um, and going into communities and just using that same framework and finding those mothers who are not getting the care. So I was thrilled to see that. Um, which leads to my first question. The health center locations that you noted in your presentation, is prenatal care available at those locations?
It is not. So the health department does not offer OB-GYN care. Uh, we have programs like Healthy Start where we provide education to, um, mothers in the prenatal period, and then we have infants as a part of the program as well. But I think it's been a good number of years since the health department actually provided OB-GYN services. And so our goal is to really, uh, make sure that we're partnering and we understand where people can go. Um, where are providers that will service some of our, uh, undocumented, um, women in particular is a challenge. And so that's really what we're looking to do. And again, in conversations with the hospitals about how to engage, uh, with them, because they do, most people deliver in hospitals, there's lots of other ways to deliver, but, um, they definitely know what's happening. And so being in close communication with them helps a lot.
Great, thank you. I ha- I have additional questions, but I don't want to, I know my comments.
We can do one more, then I'm going to go to Madam Vice Chair.
Okay, um, so a follow-up question to that. Has, I know that at one point we were offering, um, OB-GYN care. Has there ever been discussion with our local hospitals when that outreach takes place? Having, um, a, uh, medical professional from one of the hospitals or from one of the practices setting up a, a partnership? I don't know what that would look like, but, you know, I envision, you know, someone from the Department of Health going out and having an OB-GYN, uh, doctor with them, so that if you do come across a mother who might have something that she's, um, not aware of, a medical condition that could affect her or the pregnancy, um, there's extra wraparound care given beyond that first meeting.
Yeah, I don't know that we've ever had that exact discussion on having an OB-GYN kind of in a mobile capacity. Um, we have talked to the federally qualified health centers, some of which provide OB-GYN care, about us being in partnership with them and coming to their locations to provide education and kind of provide that case management and ongoing support, um, to their clients. But I'm not sure that we've had that exact conversation, but I will double check with the team.
Okay, great, thank you.
Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Nope, you turned it off, I think.
Oh, gosh, I did. Thank you for this presentation. The Department of Health, as we sit twice a year, is always very expansive. Um, so I appreciate everything you talked about. I'm particularly interested in the gun violence prevention, that's, and the cure, um, I'm getting all my names wrong.
You've got it right.
The project going on in Annapolis as, um, gun violence is something that I see uh, that we endure in our community as well, in the north part of the county, although the city is obviously much more contained. Um, so I'm, I'm curious how that could look in other parts of the county to, I'm hoping that pilot is successful. And, um, we also have seen, um, very tragic accidental shooting deaths recently of young people, and it's absolutely heart-wrenching. Um, so I know I'm, I'm grateful for the Gunlock, um, uh, pilot program that's going on. I know our, the Glen Burnie Library has been handing those out, um, uh, a lot. Uh, I think in one week, they, they gave out 300, so that's encouraging. Um, but I know this gun violence is, um, has, it's like a big octopus. It has tentacles in all different directions. So, um, can you talk a little bit more about, i- is the gun violence prevention working with all of our other stakeholders as well? Police, crisis? It just seems such a big, massive problem to wrap our arms around and actually contain and reduce and eliminate. But is there a coordination, looking at what you're... But is there a coordination, looking at what you're doing in Annapolis, to bring it up to Severn and Glen Burnie?
Yeah, so our Gun Violence Intervention Task Force is a multi-agency task force. So both Annapolis City Police and Annapolis County Police are participating there. Crisis is a part of that. The Mental Health Agency, there's a number of different organizations that are a part of that. And we can get you a full list of everyone that participates in the GVIT. And what's happening in Annapolis, and we're, again, we use data to try to drive us to at least our pilot. We haven't started yet. This is, you'll see more in our budget presentation. The funding was just presented to you all earlier this week. But getting that pilot started and seeing if we can reduce it, and you're correct, there's lots of tentacles to gun violence. So I think one of the things that we look at with public health is a layered approach to our interventions, and that no one intervention is going to eliminate gun violence, just like it won't eliminate any other, you know, health condition that we really look at. And so looking at things like a gun lock partnered with violence interruption programs, partnered with things that public safety are doing, looking at mental health and making it really multifaceted and evidence-based, is what the public health approach really means. And understanding that we're not just picking, kind of, I think this would be a good idea, but looking to see what the research has shown, where are other places that have done this and seen levels of success. And I want to make sure that we do say, I don't think that any one program is going to eliminate gun violence, that we have to do multiple things. And so looking at the data after the pilot will be important, looking at it after the gun lock pilot and continuing to track it. And it takes a couple of years sometimes to see that sort of change. And so you're correct, it'll take work, and it, it does require a multidisciplinary approach. And we'll get you a full list of everyone that participates.
Thank you. May, may I follow? So it occurs to me with some of that data that there are, gun violence is really affecting our youth. So are we, with so many other of the Department of Health programs that are partnering with the school system, is there a, is there a, is there a way into looking at gun violence through our schools in any way? I know that's tricky, but.
Yeah, that's not one that we have discussed at great length as of yet. They're definitely, they participate in a number of meetings, and they're aware of what's happening. Dr. Baddell participated in our gun lock press conference to show his support and why he thinks it's a great idea. But that is something we can definitely explore as we look at the youth, and I'll make sure that we have that in our notes to bring up.
Thank you so much. Mr. Chair, we, are we going to go over the health department budget?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm actually very interested in some of the comments that the chair made, and I want to follow up on a couple of questions that, that were spurred in my mind, based on that conversation. In your understanding, the, in your role as acting health officer, who do you report to? Do you report to the county board of health? Do you report to the secretary of health for the state? Or do you report to the county executive? Where is your ultimate authority? Where does it lie?
It's all of the above for me, actually. My understanding is that all three of those bodies or individuals have to sign off for me to be the acting health officer or to appoint a permanent health officer. And so depending on the role and the, what I'm doing at the moment, all three are a part of the supervision structure for my role.
Do you have any independent authority as health officer, acting or otherwise, to issue a public, in order for public safety, to address a nuisance in the county without the approval of the Board of Health?
Yes.
You do?
Pretty sure.
And where, where does that authority derive from?
I'd have to look specifically at the code to give it to you to make sure that you, but it, it doesn't.
Yeah, I guess the reason I'm asking is because the, the piece that the chair read specifically is the county council shall constitute the county board of health. And so there's some case law, Montgomery County, the Anchor Inn, which is a reported case 374 MD 327, which is a two thousand and three case that talks about whether the county council had the authority to ban smoking or not in restaurants. And could they do that unilaterally as the Board of Health, or did they have to do that with the county executive? And because in that case, there wasn't a designation specifically that the county council was the Board of Health, at that point, they said that action needed to be taken in concert between the two branches. That was the governmental entity acting together. But in our charter, it specifically states, we are the Board of Health. So I don't see anything that gives the county executive authority over the health officer. So with that, that's why I'm trying to understand the basis of the authority.
Mr. Smith, could, could I just intervene for a second? I, I definitely appreciate my colleagues' questions, but I feel like some of these questions are really best directed to the Office of Law. I'm, I'm sure that our health director has, you know, a lot of knowledge about, you know, the legal framework for her position. But I feel like the, you know, the very fine details are probably, you know, kind of, I feel like maybe beyond what should be the scope of our discussion today. And I just wanted to interject that thought. Thank you.
And that is good, so when the Office of Law comes down, take note.
We'll ask, we'll ask them. Alright, well, those were the main questions. I had one final question. Could you, at this point, still issue some sort of a order for public safety to try to slow COVID if you saw an increase in the number of cases?
That is completely dependent on the state and federal emergency declarations, which are expiring, and so.
So does your authority derive from the state and federal regulations?
The state regulations, yes. But as the public health emergency declarations are expiring, both at a federal and state level, some of those, some of those powers come into play specifically under that.
Okay, so do you see there being a limitation on your ability to enact such an order for public safety based on state decisions that are being made? Or is that something you have independently vested in you because you are the health officer for Annapolis County?
No, the state, I'm a state employee, and so that's important to, to note. And I do, when you ask who I report to, the secretary of health is definitely one of those individuals. And so the state's authority and the authority that they give to local health officers is something that we have to keep in mind. And it's not something I think was taken lightly by my predecessor or would be taken lightly by me, and hopefully something that we could partner together to do, and not something that would have to be a contentious thing if we reached that point.
I hope it's not contentious. I agree. But we'll see what the appellate court says. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to switch over, I think, and just for a technical, for purposes, in this capacity, you're actually sitting as the executive officer and secretary for the county board of health. That's your, that's at least in the code at the state level. That's the title and position in which you're, words have meaning, right? And so just wanted to sort of put that out as an educational sort of point for, for me and others. Ma'am, I think you were next.
I actually wanted to go back to a question that I had about your presentation. And this was a, a piece that you addressed very quickly, but it's also very exciting. And that is the kind of digitization of school health data. And one of the questions that I wanted to ask is, would a, like if a child's family had, you know, their child had a primary care provider, is there any way that that data can be shared, you know, with, of course, the authorization from the family? You know, whoever needs to give the authorization, because I know, obviously, there's enormous privacy surrounding health data. But is there, is that, in, is that possible with what's going to be set up? Or is that something that maybe we're looking at down the road? Because that just seems like it could be a really helpful tool for, you know, primary care doctors to sort of have a record of what's going on in school as well.
Yeah. I don't think at this point that's something, looking at like bidirectional sharing with primary care providers is something we're exploring. EHR has most often come with a capacity to interface with health information exchanges, so CRISP in the state of Maryland. So if you've been in the hospital, and so certain providers can share information into CRISP. I don't think we're going down that road just yet with school health. But it is helpful to be able to import information, to understand children's hospitalizations and their, if they've been to the ER. So there's a little bit of communication there from that perspective. But our ability to share electronically with other providers is really based on their individual setup. Everybody has their own EHR, so a little, little complicated, but hopefully it will make record sending a little bit easier. You print it and share it if we've got the release from the parents to send it over.
Thank you.
I think it's a little better. What's next?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to circle back to the South County food assessment that was in your presentation. I thank you for including it. I wanted to ask just a clarifying question. When it says hunger is the biggest concern, is it the biggest health concern? Or the, or the biggest concern as in, you know, in someone's life, if that, if that makes sense?
Yeah, I'm going to actually call Jennifer Snyder, our Director for Disease Prevention and Management. But the survey was specifically around food, but I'll have her kind of answer a bit more. She participated in a number of the meetings that were held.
Thank you.
Hi.
Thank you. Jennifer Snyder, the Director of Disease Prevention and Management.
So we worked with four organizations in South County to provide, to do listening sessions and surveys. And in, in the, in the surveys, the biggest health concern, or the biggest concern that they had was hunger. That was, that was the question, yes. But we also, we assessed food, access to food, but we also asked questions about physical activity. So when the final report comes out, we'll certainly, you know, be sharing that information. But there is some recommendations. We're still in the drafting phase of that report. And then from that report, you know, we'll get together again, get the stakeholders together again and decide, see what interventions that we could put in place to, you know, to address the needs down there.
Fantastic. A quick follow-up. Is there an approximate date? I don't expect to hold you to something exact, but an approximate date when you expect that to be?
So we're hoping that we're going to get a draft on May eighth.
Okay.
So within the, yeah, so hopefully next week, we'll, we'll get something.
Awesome. Thank you.
I think you were next, Miss.
Yes, thank you so much. I'm always just amazed at how much y'all do and how, what the broad breadth of everything that you cover. Thank you, in particular for the in-depth discussion on the gun violence interventions that we're doing and be a part of. Touching on the food issues that came up. The county executive has announced a formation of a new food council. Is the health department going to have a seat on that?
Yes, we will.
And you, two other quick questions. So one, I saw in there, it's interesting, you brought it up, that the rise in the cases of congenital syphilis. I had just read an article about that, saying that Maryland does not require testing for mothers during pregnancy for syphilis. And I had reached out to the head of the House Health Delic, Health Committee to say, is this something we can look into to increase? And so to see that we had some cases here in the county, I hope that's something that maybe we can do some more intervention stuff with. And then Narcan has now become much more widely available. I know that all the school nurses have it on hand at schools. Are, and you may not know this, this maybe is, this is probably a question for the school system. Are students allowed to carry Narcan at school?
I'm going to call Karen Siska Creel, who's our Director of School Health Services. She may have a, has a better understanding of what age groups are able to have medications on hand and the regulations around that.
I do love this ability to phone a friend. It is so helpful.
Not on the phone, right. The Director of School Health Services. To answer your question, not without a doctor's order. We do require any medication that comes into school, and that's a health department policy as well as a school system policy, that a student have an order for it by a physician.
Okay. Because I know for my older kids, now that we can get the Narcan more easily, we've gotten it for all of them to carry, to have for anything. But they, I need to make sure that my high schoolers do not carry it to school.
Good idea.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
That was the final answer. Sounds, sounds like a good one. And I think you had.
Yes, just a few more questions, actually, in the same naloxone line of questioning. So I know we can get naloxone over the counter now. Is there training required in those circumstances, do you know?
No, so if you go to purchase it, there's instructions on what to do. It's relatively simple for folks to administer, and so it doesn't require that you have training. Of course, we do offer it, but it's not a requirement if you go to purchase it, just like when you go to the pharmacy to pick up any other prescription, and they give you lots of instructions on how to use it, potential side effects, et cetera. That information is included.
Okay, and if I may ask a follow-up question. Of the uses that we're seeing of naloxone in the county, are we seeing an uptick in use on minors and young adults? Specifically, school age children to, you know, young twenties?
I'm going, I'm going to phone another friend. And I can't say that we're necessarily seeing an increase in our school health rooms there, but I will ask Sandy O'Neill, our Director of Behavioral Health, if she has any information on that, and if not, we'll try to get you some.
Good morning, Sandy O'Neill, Director of Behavioral Health. That is a great question. We'll have to go back and parse the data to see if we're seeing an increase in Narcan use with that population, with the caveat that we only know if Narcan is used if it's reported.
Understood.
So it may be unreported and out there.
Okay. That makes sense. And if I made this, actually dovetails into my next question, because I'm hearing a lot about our youth struggling with depression, anxiety, all of the things that I think the Warm Line is seeing. So this question is actually about the Warm Line and the type of calls that we're seeing for our youth. Are, you know, I think that we assumed, once children got back into the school buildings, life returned to more normalcy, we'd see a trend down, but we're seeing the opposite. And I'm trying to pinpoint exactly what that is. And kudos, thank you for the green pin. We're my green today for mental health, so.
Yeah, I think that question is best answered by Executive Director for the Mental Health Agency, who manages the Warm Line. So I'll ask Adrienne to join me.
Good morning, Adrienne Mecler. I'm the Director for the Mental Health Agency. And yes, during COVID and since COVID, we have seen a thirty percent increase in the number of calls to our Warm Line. And for the, as the slide indicated, definite increase in the number of calls from children and youth. We can drill down to the information to find exactly the percentages of the types of calls and what the primary, what the primary reason for the call is, I believe, even in that population. But I would have to provide that data. Jen Corbin is here, who can give you her sense of what that is. And she has a pretty good sense. If you'd like some further information, but the exact data we can provide you.
Yeah, that would, that would be very helpful, just as, you know, leaders in our communities to have a pulse on what's going on. Is, are, are youth calling because their family is in crisis, because they are in crisis? And if they are in crisis, what, what is the impetus for that? I know social media has an enormous effect on our young population. I was happy to see, within the Broadneck Peninsula, school counselors are holding meetings to teach parents the dangers that we don't know, because we don't have all of the apps. And there's just knowledge that parents need to have, I think, to help their children navigate the waters of social media and just social interaction. So, thank you.
And then finally, Ms. Rovian.
Thank you. This, I think, question arose from Ms. Hammer's question. And this is probably back to the school health leader. Are teachers allowed to carry Narcan in school? And would there be, you know, an issue if a teacher administered Narcan if they felt like there was an overdose?
I think I can answer this one. The, the ability for adults in the building to carry their necessary medications is, I think, probably an HR question for ACPS. But we would ask that teachers, if there is a health emergency and they think that Narcan needs to be administered, that they call the health room staff for a full assessment and so that we can administer that medication.
So a delay of, you know, that time is, you know, I, I don't know, I'm just thinking in my own classroom, you know, if I call the school health office, you know, a minute, two minutes, is that a critical delay or?
If you are seeing something kind of happening in real time, and you're not finding someone down, and you don't know how long they've been down, it should be an okay delay.
Okay.
I'm assuming if they're in your class, they're going to be at least, at least they walked in responsive. And so if you're starting to see a child become unresponsive in your room, and they will, you know, that minute to two minutes it takes them to get there, should be an appropriate amount of time for a response.
Thank you.
Alright, any additional business to be brought before? All right, any additional business to be brought before the Board of Health? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Allison Pickard.
Is there a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any, any opposed? Okay, motion carries, the Anarona County Board of Health is adjourned until October. I'll still email you probably before then, but October is when we'll meet again. We will now meet as the county council, and we'll continue hearing from the departments on the proposed FY24 budget. And before us is the Health Officer, who formerly, or otherwise known as our Executive Officer and Secretary of the Board of Health, is here to present her Health Office budget.
Yes, so I will make this as quick as possible.
Thank you, hi, for the record, I'm Sam Chirriaco, I work in the Budget Office, I'm the Budget Analyst for the Health Department. I just wanted to direct you guys to page 248 in the Budget Book for their presentation, and I'll hand it over to Toni and Grace and Sean.
Okay, joining us is Grace, who's our Director of Finance, and obviously Sean has been here with her. Again, our budget is just over $82 million. That is a $4.9 million decrease, or 5.6% decrease over our FY23 budget. A lot of that is a cut in grants that were COVID grants and federal dollars coming from COVID, so, expected. Our budget is about 40, 60% county funds and 40% grants. When we say grants, the vast majority of those are state dollars. So categorical grants for specific things, like our asthma and lead program, that says you're doing this exact thing with this funding, and then core dollars, which are a little more flexible, and funding that the state provides to the Health Department. And as we mentioned before, our proposed budget really looks at working on all the things that our strategic plan outlines, our workforce, infrastructure, and addressing disparities. So first, I'll start with, this is actually the Mental Health Agency, and their funding crisis response, $250,000 in general funds, $600,000 in ARPA funds, and $750,000 in opioid restitution funds. And then looking at retention bonuses, again, about 20% of the healthcare workforce left the field. And so we do see real challenges in hiring, particularly in the behavioral health field. Federal, state, and school mandates, as new schools come on board, it is mandated that we provide health services there. And this includes those, those new schools, evening hours, when you bring on new community schools as well, they require a full-time nurse, where some of our schools share a nurse, and so that's the cost that you see there. The Healthy Communities Program that I discussed during our presentation is funded with ARPA dollars for the next year, to allow us to look at, again, what we want to do long-term. We're pretty sure that we're close to that, but we'll continue to fine-tune it and make sure that with next year, we're able to continue the things that we need to provide in the community. Our Bay Meadow office location, which initially was where our COVID operations was out of, we downsized the number of spaces that we're renting there, but again, providing that rent for both Bay Meadow and the Parole Health Center. Operating funds from the, for the Brooklyn Park Healthy Food Pantry, coming from general funds. And then the Health Department actually purchases the county's GARE membership, which is the Government Alliance on Racial Equity. And so that membership for the, all county organizations is housed in the Health Department. Okay, and then these are our capital budgets. No changes from last year, demo building code, $150,000, failed sewage and private well fund, $80,000, septic system enhancements, 3.3 million, and then working with AMC or Luminous, $500,000 for their new facilities. That's it.
Oh wow, like, okay. I was reading through something, I expected, any, any additional questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, we did, I don't know how it skipped over. My apologies, I knew there should have been one more. Uh, Community Health Ambassadors and Behavioral Health Enhancement. There's a number of things here, but mostly funding various positions in behavioral health through opioid restitution funds, school health pay adjustments, which I've talked to a number of you about. So there's a 2% increase on top of the 5% increase for other county employees, and we will be working with the Budget Office this year over the summer to really analyze the needs of that workforce, to really determine if it is indeed additional pay, or if it's benefits like retirement that will keep them with us and hopefully slow down our turnover. The Violence Interruption Program that I discussed as a pilot will be starting with ARPA funds, YWCA funds, and we will be putting out about $500,000 for community grants that will run through our opioid intervention team, and that's opioid restitution funds, so looking to fund various community organizations working in the space to eliminate some of our substance use issues.
And I'll, I'm just gonna record and say, I am still and hopeful that someday school nurses can be back as merit employees, because I truly believe they deserve a retirement, they are part of the system, I don't know why we chose years ago to move them to contractual process, but if there's any effort on my part that could be needed to enhance that or remove that, I am certainly a fan of taking care of our school nurses, so, just putting that on the record. I know Ms. Vice Chair had a comment earlier in reference to the.
Mine is of similar nature, and I'm, I've brought it up and had this conversation about school health for many years now, and I see that our Budget Officer is in the room, so it's more just a symbolic nudge that the council, at least a couple of us, are eager to see our school health become regular employees. I was sort of, I couldn't believe, actually, how many of the Health Department employees are contractual. And I think it's something we need to be working for, not just with school health, but, I mean, that, they are a big chunk of that. But the, I think, 62%, if I remember correctly from our conversation. And with this labor market, I think we, as a county, need to be mind, we, we need to be taking care of our workforce so that we can deliver the excellent services across all of your bureaus. So it's something that I'm eager to see happen, and look at what it makes sense. I mean, we have other departments with this issue too, but your numbers are quite startling, 62% contractual. Those employees have many options of where they could be employed, and we need to keep our Health Department and all the amazing work that y'all do in the community going. So I, I, we, it's something we need to work towards, for sure, thank you.
Well, that's, that's at least, that's two votes there, Budget Officer, so hopefully the county executive, one of his, his, you know, four-year wishes should be to transition the school health nurses to merit employees, because they deserve to be fully implemented into the county. Sir.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Chris Trumauer, Budget Officer, when I'm recognized in the audience by more than one council member, I feel compelled to come up to the mic. So as the Health Officer said, we are very aware and interested in the current situation with the attrition and the vacancies in the school health officers, school health nurses. That's why we're gonna work hard this summer to actually survey those folks, figure out what the drivers are, and then we will make recommendations that I think you will see in the next year's budget. I don't want to make the mistake to assume that the, the entire universe of school health nurses all want the same thing.
Sure.
So you guys understandably want them to be merit positions. I'm sure a lot of the health nurses want to be merit, but I don't know that all of them do. So we wanna look at that, we wanna make thoughtful, deliberate recommendations. What we're doing in this year's budget is giving them a little extra compensation boost in addition to the normal pay package, in anticipation that we will bring forth recommendations in the fiscal '25 budget for a more long-term solution.
That was a very Budget Officer-appropriate answer.
I am here to serve.
Well, if I may follow up, and I appreciate you coming forward, and I'm, I am aware of what's happening. It is, it is a pretty big financial lift for the county. So it's not just nothing to transition 62% of the Health Department workforce to merit employees. So as a very fiscally responsible and conservative county and council, and a county executive, we have to also acknowledge that. We didn't get here overnight, so I think we're gonna, we didn't get to this place in county government, but it is something that I am, think we need to take a very serious look at, not just in the Health Department, but across other, other departments too, acknowledging the kind of service that we, our constituents, our constituents expect from county services.
Agreed.
And the workforce is part of that. So thank you, Mr. Budget Officer.
Don't go away.
Ms. Hammer?
And this question may have been better at the previous, under the Board of Health meeting, but I see on here, so the Community Health Ambassador Program, then there's also Community Health Workers. What's the difference between the two?
Yeah, so the Community Health Ambassadors are individuals who work for these community-based organizations. So the seven organizations that we partner with, we give them very specific, and this year it's been COVID and mental health, instructions on these are the things that we want you to cover, we give them zip codes and places to go. Our Community Health Workers, there are two of them in the Health Department and the Health Equity and Racial Justice Office. Those two individuals are a little bit more of a Swiss Army knife, of depending on what's happening in the community, participating at various events to represent the Health Department for different issues, surveying the community and bringing that information back. So they are similar in the types of work that they do, but the way that they function and the way that we're able to really use our Community Health Workers, that our Health Department employees, is a little different. And we intentionally worked with community-based organizations, so it wasn't a government entity coming to talk to you. So for those who maybe don't wanna talk to the Health Department, it's someone that works for Kingdom Care, right, and not a Health Department employee that's approaching you about this issue. So just trying to use them a little differently.
And how many Health Ambassadors do we have in that program?
Um, I believe there are 26, yeah, 26.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. So with regard to the Violence Interruption Program, I met with a constituent earlier this week who is doing a lot of this work already. But obviously, finances and, and putting investments into that program as an individual is quite a lift. In this program, this pilot program, will the Department of Health be partnering with community organizations already doing the work? And if not, this then goes to the Budget Officer, has there ever been any discussion for using the leftover, remaining ARPA money to offer grant opportunities for organizations that are doing this work?
I'll go first. And the answer to that is, ideally, this is, and this is something that Cure Violence makes apparent, and they put it in their report, this is something that is better done when you're partnering with a community-based organization to actually hire the individuals, manage the program. Some of that is around, if you are someone who has committed a crime in the past, maybe we can't hire you, but you are the right person to be talking about Violence Interruption in that particular community. And so some of it is having a trusted voice, people who know the community, and organizations that are working in those communities already. So ideally, this would be an RFP process that we'd go through to have an organization stand up a Cure Violence model, and then that's also in partnership with Cure Violence, to say that we're doing the model to its appropriate fidelity within the community.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Robine?
Thank you, um, this is back to the school health employee question. I'm just really curious, are we actually concerned that there are school health employees that don't want to be merit employees? I just, I, I really question that premise a little bit, and if that's the case, does it really, I mean, if that's the case, maybe the study could be more focused on how than, than if?
I think in the conversations that we've had with staff and in conversation with the, with the Budget Office, this has been a, what is the top priority? As Ms. Pickard mentioned, it is expensive, and so if you're looking for a higher salary, becoming merit may not necessarily do that, right away. And it will provide better retirement benefits for individuals, so understanding, is it retirement? And what we've seen, when we've talked to staff and in my conversations with the school health leadership, that it's a combination, people initially come into the jobs and they're okay with their lack of retirement initially, and then a couple of years in, not many, maybe one to two years, you start to think about additional benefits. And so what is that mix of staff? Some who would say, I'd love to make more money, I'm not as interested in retirement, just considering that we can't, most likely won't be able to do it all at once, so what do we prioritize that will actually stop the turnover? Is it more money for salaries, or is it more money directed towards their merit status? Which would slow it down fastest, I think, they all want all of the above, but what can we do and in what order?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Trumauer, did, did you have a response for the previous question?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, Chris Trumauer, Budget Officer. Well, I, I think Ms. Fiedler asked a two-part question and only got part one answered.
Okay, I'm sorry about that, yeah.
If, if we're done with Ms. Robine's question, I can jump back in time and do part two to Ms. Fiedler's.
Part two it is.
Which I believe was, would the administration be open to using remaining ARP funding for some sort of community grant program along those lines? I mean, the short answer is yes, we would be open to that. The more complex answer is, we have programmed in a number of ARP initiatives to the '24 budget. As you saw during my presentation, we had a list of those on Monday. We do anticipate that there will be a limited amount of ARP funding still available going forward. We have not made any decisions on how to deploy that yet, but if that's something that you and the council and the Health Department are interested in, we could certainly consider an initiative along those lines.
Thank you, I'll follow up with the details that I learned the other evening, so I appreciate that.
Sounds good, thank you.
And then Ms. Leder.
Thank you, I, I'm switching gears a little bit. Wanted to just ask a question about the septic system enhancements. If there was an idea, if you could describe like the scope, is there a targeted area that you're looking at in particular? Just to give, just a few more details about that particular project would be wonderful.
Sure, I'm gonna call Don Kurdi, our Director of Environmental Health Services, up, who has a wealth of knowledge on this, and I won't pretend to be anywhere near as good at this as he is.
Thank you.
Good morning, Don Kurdi, Director of Environmental Health. The Septic Enhancement Program is basically the Bay Restoration Grant Program, which the main focus is the entire critical area. Anytime a septic system is replaced, or a new house is built that's on a septic system, it does require a nitrogen-reducing unit, and the grant money is available to support that. We also use it for abandoning septic systems and connecting to public sewer, but there are a whole bunch of structures to that program on how that money can be used and connected to, that is administered through MDE. But we also partner with DPW on any of those types of connections.
Thank you.
Mr. Bokey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question, back to my crystal ball questions again, but looking at what you have up on the screen, about a million and a half of that money is ARPA money. What is the plan for next year, when the ARPA funds are pretty much gone, to look at these programs and these folks who have now been working for the county, some of them two, three, or more years, how do you anticipate funding that?
Yeah, I think next year we'll be back with additional requests and questions, and hopefully slightly more fine-tuned, right, with a year of what we, again, the crystal ball, hope to continue to see the trends of COVID staying down. And so what does it really look like? What are these, what does it take to operationalize these programs and put them out in different ways? And so hopefully next year we'll have a more fine-tuned number. We think this year we're pretty close on some of these, we know what the Health Ambassadors cost, the Healthy Communities Program, there might be a little more that we can move there. But it will be a question next year of which of these programs has been successful, showing that data, and then asking for funding to do it, so please keep them in mind.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Please.
So this is gonna be for Mr. Trumauer, the Budget Office. Do you all project out, when you're looking at these programs and say, assuming that they continue, we're gonna have to find another million and a half in revenue to continue this if this source of funding is exhausted? Is there some kind of projection that you all have done on that so far?
Uh, thank you, Councilman Chris Trumauer, Budget Officer, for the record. So I mean, we do, we do look forward in revenue projections to see overall what we think is gonna happen. Obviously, each year is its own unique situation, things go up, things go down. As far as the ARP initiatives, yes, I think the Health Officer described perfectly what we're doing this year, which is. which is continuing many of the programs we started during the pandemic, but expecting there to be some moderate decrease in the level of need as the pandemic wanes. But COVID honestly did discover some health equity gaps and other disparities that existed before the pandemic, but kind of came to the light that we certainly want to address. So we expect that going forward, there will be some level of continuance of some of these programs. We will likely have to pick that up with general funds or potentially other sources of funding through state or federal grants. But every year, at least in recent history, the county has gotten incremental funding from our revenue streams, just from growth and inflation and all of that. And that would be part of that conversation is, can we continue some of those programs using that recurring incremental general fund revenue? Thank you.
Seeing no additional lights, definitely appreciate you all coming down. Both as the Board of Health and the Health Department, extremely valuable information. I do want to just get a quick consensus on the council. If you want to pause for 10 minutes, or if not, let me know. I'm just looking at head nods. Okay, so we'll take just a 10-minute recess, and then we'll come back with Central Services and then Wrexon Park right after that. Is that fine? Okay. Thank you. Do I hit this? I don't know. I think it just like. We're gonna get ready and get started in about 60 seconds. See if everyone wanted to sort of come back, come back together. All right, we're gonna go ahead and start back up as they prepare the IT, the brief. After Central Services, we'll do Wrexon Park, and then continue in the order of Department of Transportation, Aging, and OIT, just so everyone is aware. With that being said, Central Services, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Smith, members of the County Council, Madam Auditor. My name is Susan Harold, and I am nervous. My voice is shaking. And I am the brand-new Central Services Officer. With me is Kate Dawson, who is our Senior Management Assistant and our Departmental Budget Guru. Also, Kyle Madden, our Budget Analyst, is here. I would like to very much express our thanks to the Budget Office this year with me being new, helping us collect our budget for submission and to go over with you today. I will try to keep.
One second, one sec. You can find.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The budget can be found on page 113.
113.
Your budget book, if you're listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. That was my last instruction from Mr. Trumbauer. Let your budget in. So I will try to keep our presentation brief. I know you have a big schedule today, but as there are some new members of the council, and I'm new, I thought it would be helpful to just give you a brief overview of the Office of Central Services and the great work that we do. Central Services has about 209 full-time and 11 temporary employees. These dedicated employees span six divisions. The Administration section is in charge of just running the department, the county's P-card program, the energy program, which is relatively new, and our budget activities. Purchasing is responsible for ensuring that all goods and services needed by county agencies are bought quickly and legally. This is everything from pencils to police cars. We are also responsible, the Purchasing Office is also responsible for outreach to minority veterans, small and women-owned businesses, to ensure that they have the information they need to bid and win county contracts. And I can tell you that this is a very big priority for our department in this upcoming year, is expanding our program. The Facilities Maintenance Division performs and coordinates preventive and corrective maintenance to more than 260 buildings, including police and fire departments, the Circuit Courthouse in Annapolis, the Arundel Center, senior centers, libraries, the detention centers, and our parking garages. We are also responsible for countywide office renos, custodial services, facility attendance, building security, and landscaping. Our Real Estate Division manages and controls county real property, including all real property leases and agreements. The leases bring in more than $1 million in revenue to the county annually. The Real Estate Division assists county agencies in space management, looking for space, and prepares and manages all real estate lease agreements and renews expired agreements in collaboration with the Office of Law. Risk Management has two.
Real quick, for the, I love it. On the risk, the real estate, do you, you all obviously maintain a list of vacant real estate assets that the county hold? Is that like a list that exists?
There's a list of all county-owned properties, and we could provide that if you'd like.
Yep. Thank you.
Risk Management has two sections, safety and insurance. The Safety section is responsible for reducing risk and promoting a safe and healthy workplace and maintaining a safety culture within the county workforce. This is accomplished through promoting safety awareness, inspections, and they run the AED. This is accomplished through promoting safety awareness inspections and they run the AED program for the, for the county. The Insur, the Insurance section protects the county from liability and injury exposure through prompt and effective workers' comp and general liability claims management. And finally, Fleet Maintenance is responsible for more than four thousand vehicles and equipment, three garages, thirteen fuel sites across the county. So I'll keep that short and move on to the dollars. I'm gonna start with our Purchasing section. We have budgeted for, to replace mailroom equipment. So believe it or not, we do still have some snail mail and inter-office mail. During COVID, the county went largely to a lot of electronic processing and signatures, but we do still have some outgoing mail, mail services and inter-office mail. But our equipment has, is outdated and no longer supported by the vendor, so we need to upgrade those. In Facilities, we've budgeted for a new Facilities Maintenance Supervisor. This person will supervise the horticulture crew. So as we take on more property, we have more responsibility for trees and grounds and this position will go a long way into managing that. We have budgeted for two vehicles. One is a cargo van that will be used to move furniture, equipment, haul debris. Right now, if we need a large vehicle, we have to borrow a van or a truck from our partners at the Fire Department and it's not always available. And sometimes during emergencies, Facilities is tasked to move shelter pods and so we will have that available to us. And then we have also budgeted an SUV for the Construction Planning Coordinator, which we received in this year's budget. So that would be just a vehicle for that employee. During COVID, our Facilities team worked very hard to make sure all of our buildings were continuously stocked with chemical cleansers, hand sanitizers, and other cleaning agents. We received a large amount of these chemicals. They were donated to us, but they have since expired. We have budgeted a one-time cost to have a company come in and dispose of the chemicals in an environmentally responsible manner and in compliance with the law. We are replacing some equipment. Anybody that was here the other day and saw the seal fall off the podium can appreciate that some of our equipment that we use for press, PA systems, tables and chairs need to be upgraded periodically, so we have budgeted to replace those things and also some broken-down custodial equipment for the Rundle Center. We have one-time funding for county repairs and renovation. This is, this will include office space, furniture carpet replacement, and other facility upgrades. Includes a five hundred thousand one time, which will be added to our recurring budget. I'm sure you'll notice an increase in our utility costs for electricity, gas, and fuel oil for FY twenty-four. During the pandemic, Central Services reduced the budget for utilities because our buildings were closed. But over the past couple of years, employees have returned to work and building usage has increased and unfortunately so have utility costs. We have seen an increase in utility bills forty to seventy percent in some of our buildings. So this will account for an increase of almost two and a half million dollars in our budget. We are increasing, we have a budget increase for grounds maintenance. In addition to the Crownsville Hospital Center, there are several other sites that the county has taken on this year and our Horticulture Crew, which we have asked for a position to add to that crew, has some additional responsibility and so we'll be handling that. And we have one-time funding for renovation projects in addition to some recurring money in FY twenty-four. These budgets, these projects are building refreshes, badly needed improvements. I may have already said that. In our Real Estate Office, we have budgeted to reclassify one of our employees there. This person acts as our leasing and our Assets Manager. He does a lot of work and it's, he's working outside of his classification, so we've asked personnel to take a look at his, his job reclass. In Risk Management, we've budgeted for an additional Safety Coordinator. Our Safety Program, specifically our CPR and our AED Program, is widely in the region recognized and has been most recently recognized by the American Heart Association for our CPR Training. So we would like to hire another Safety Coordinator to expand that program. And we're also budgeting for ten additional AED kits and forty additional bleeding control kits. As you may know, the AEDs in all the buildings are replaced on a schedule and then we try to add ten for county locations each year. And finally, in our Fleet Administration, gas and diesel costs have increased over the last few years and are predicted to remain high in FY twenty-four and we've budgeted to account for those increases. And Funding for Vehicle will also replace nineteen vehicles that were totaled in this current fiscal year and then are the hundred and sixty-four normal replacement vehicles for the fiscal year is accounted for this year. So but before we move on to Capital Projects, shall we ask questions or do you want me to run right through?
Nope, I see some lights here, so.
See some lights?
Yes.
Thank you. So we met with the Police Department yesterday and I had a question for them about their fleet. My understanding is that there may be some, well, they shared yesterday that there are a variety of reasons why they retire a vehicle. What, from your position, is the process and how you evaluate specifically police vehicles? I know there's a variety of them in the department.
There is a variety of them and this would also come into play with some of our other, all the county vehicles actually. So there's a point system. It has to do with the age of the vehicle, the mileage on the vehicle, the amount of service the vehicle has had and there's sort of a grid, if you will, and an outline of all those factors that come into play to determine what, when they're replaced on schedule. So as you can imagine, some vehicles get more wear and tear. They accumulate mileage faster than others. So those types of things are taken into consideration and then the Fleet Administrator submits which vehicles are scheduled to be replaced based on that. Thank you.
Mr. Boeck. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Specifically looking at page one seventeen. At the bottom, under Program Statement, the very last paragraph talks about the prevailing wage program. So I have questions about this. I'm gonna ask a lot of departments about it, but I'm gonna start with you guys because you're here. So the County Council did enact this legislation last July, so that has been within the previous fiscal year. What have you seen in terms of the impact on projects, in terms of costs, as a result of the prevailing wage legislation? That's the first question. And the second question is, you note in here that you have three people who are part of a prevailing wage staff. I don't see those new positions, so did you repurpose people that you had already? How did that work?
You can answer about the positions. I was in here.
I think I pressed this button. The three positions were added in last year's budget when the law went into effect.
Thank you. I forgot that.
So what I can tell you is the prevailing wage team since July has been setting up the program. They are now active in their first project where they are actually doing the auditing and the monitoring of the project and going out and looking at pay and talking to employees. So they are just now sort of getting into the details. So as for the cost of a project, I don't know that we would have that information yet. That would be on the project side.
So is that DPW? They're gonna have that?
If it's a DPW project, they would have that information. Our job as the prevailing wage team is to go out and make sure that the project managers are paying the prevailing wage and that we go out and then do audits.
So you're more compliance and backend stuff?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Seeing no more questions, Madam Boeck, Chair?
Just on the flip side of that, thank you all for your presentation and I know you're nervous, so.
That's okay.
This is really more of a comment than a statement, but as wage theft is a huge issue in the state of Maryland and across the country, especially in the building trades, I'm very proud of our prevailing wage provision in Anandale County. But if my colleague has a problem with it, I guess we'll hear more about it during the next two weeks. So I'm, I'm excited to see what your team produces over the next coming projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you think Ms. Boeck has a rebuttal?
No, not today. We, we had that discussion last year. So I did pass by Lake Shore Firehouse. I pass it every day on Mountain Road and it looks like they have charging stations in now for electric vehicles. Is that something that you all are working on? And if so, what is, where is that in all of this? I know you sort of mentioned, and I saw it in the budget pages, but frankly, thirty-four million dollars, it's hard to parse out. Actually ninety-four, excuse me. It's hard to parse out where everything is.
Sure. I will cover that a little bit under my Capital Projects. But just briefly, I can tell you that what you have seen are BGE chargers. And so we have partnered with BGE and they provide those charging stations. We have, I think, two fast chargers, I can't remember the breakdown, but there's four at Heritage now. We've partnered with BGE so that they will install them for free.
Cool.
To the county for public use. So we just provide the space for them and they have built some. When we go into the larger EV project with the, with the, the Resilience Authority, we will pay for some and we are still sort of in the early stages of deciding what the policies are gonna be, who's gonna use them, are they gonna be for county employees, et cetera. We are working very closely with the Resilience Authority on getting that started. But what you see are BGE chargers and I will also say that we've partnered with BGE's Smart Card Program so that our four electric vehicles have been, are now considered a fleet so that we get a discount when we are in other areas of the county and we need to charge, our employees need to charge. We get a discounted rate, so.
Cool, awesome. Good answer.
Good stuff.
Madam Boeck, do you have another comment?
Thank you.
Oh, you turned it off. You turned it off by the.
So stupid. For the EV chargers, as you know, I'm at some point gonna talk about the Glen Burnie Town Center. I know we have, I'm pretty sure we have some charging stations in the free garage. I'm pretty sure. Or if, if not, they're not there, now they're coming. But, but as we locate these, especially in garages, is there, I, I'm just, when we, you know, I'm really wanting to improve signage in the town center, but is it a process or a procedure to actually let public know that there's EV chargers in buildings, like in our parking garage? It barely says parking on the Glen Burnie Parking Garage where you would actually see that there's free parking there. So we're working on that with our, with our DHCD grant, with economic development. But I'm just wondering if there's, we should also be flagging where, where they all are. I know they're on apps and if you have a vehicle, you, but when you're driving, you shouldn't be looking at your app, you know? So I'm just putting that out there. It made me think about our project with our, our grant from DHCD. But if BG and E is installing them, maybe they could also install the signage, that they're telling people that they're there.
Certainly, and we can certainly speak to them about that and, and take a look at that. I know that part of the overall EV program is to locate the chargers within X amount of miles off of Main thoroughfare. So when we're looking at Heritage, we know Heritage is a good spot because it's right off of Route ninety-seven. So those are all part of the larger project, if you will, but yes, certainly that's something that we will be looking at.
Alright, I guess we'll transition now to the Capital Program.
I have one quick question.
Please.
Well, it may not be quick, but I have another question, sorry. So I guess, this is a question I don't recall that I've asked in previous budgets. Looking at the Purchasing Department, I guess it's page one seventeen of the Budget Book. The Personal Services is six hundred and fifty-seven thousand. How many employees does that cover? Because then, looking at Facilities Management on the next page at one eighteen, Personal Services is six hundred and sixty-one thousand. So I'm just trying to figure a breakdown of your employees, how many fall in sort of these different classifications in terms of the numbers?
Sure. Well, we could get you a specific breakdown if you like, but what I can tell you is that in Purchasing, we have ten buyers and two assistant purchasing agents. Our buying, our procurement department is large. And so while we may not have as many employees as FMD, they're a higher-level employee. They're doing purchasing and buying and so we could certainly get you a breakdown of employees and what their positions are. But I, I'm gonna say it's those, it's professional positions.
Okay, so it's like, so you have twelve people in Purchasing?
We have, just in buying.
Oh, just in buying, okay, alright.
So there's, there's two assistant purchasing agents, the person, the purchasing agent herself, ten buyers, support staff. And then we have, I will say in Purchasing, it also, the prevailing wage team is under purchasing. The M, the MBE program is under purchasing, so it's a pretty large. And the mailroom.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I just trying to get a comparison point, right, between those two different departments?
Sure.
And how many people are covered by each of those? Because we get that statement that says this is attributable to the pay package and benefits and it doesn't break down any more than that. So if you can give me that information, it would help. Thank you.
Thank you. So this will be, do you want to flip over to me? Okay, that's okay. Well, I'm just gonna read through the list and it's pretty brief in any case. The Underground Storage Tank Replacement, there's been no change for this year. Facility renovation and relocations, this is what we sort of call our bread and butter projects. This is renovating, relocating office, county offices, furniture equipment, space planning, and moving. So departments send us a request each year and as we are able and have funding, this, it comes out of these accounts. We have county facilities and system upgrades. These are upgrades to county facilities and systems that have either reached the use of their, that re, re, reached the end of their life or need to be brought up in standards. So we prioritize list. We do have a backlog on those projects, but we will continue on and prioritize as things come into play. The Parking Garage renovation and repair, this is the repair and renovation of Whitmore and the Glen Burnie garages. I will have to say that once we started these projects, there was a significant increase and cost escalation. Once we got in there, there were some structural issues and it required a lot more work and additional cost. The Millersville Garage relocation is, there's nothing, this has been pushed out. This will happen after the fire maintenance, the fire equipment maintenance facility. That is in its early stages. We have purchased land for the facility and the program will be designed in FY twenty-four and constructed in FY twenty-five. The Truman Parkway Complex, this is a project to renovate their bathrooms. The construction was shifted to this fiscal year and we've increased funding to account for cost escalations. The EV charging station and other green technologies, again, this is our larger EV project in coordination with the Resilience Authority. And I'm sure that Mr. Fleming will go into a larger detail or if you have additional questions that we haven't covered already. But that is the, to the beginning stages of the infrastructure. But that is the, to the beginning stages of the infrastructure for that. The Circuit Court renovation is in process, and the schedule has been adjusted from a two-year cycle to a three-year phase cycle, brought, brought the FY23 budget down, but added money in FY24. The ADA retrofit and installation is, there's been no change. The CSSC water supply, you probably already know, the amendment to the master plan has already been approved by this council, and this is it, just a reminder, we're bringing water to what is commonly known as the Millersville Warehouse. As, as of right now, there's no potable water. And our final project is the Ralph Bunch Center. This is a new project. We are going to renovate and rehabilitate the Ralph Bunch Community Center in South County. This will be a family support center as well as a community center. So if there's any questions?
It's always good when it's an easy brief, because, you know, when you get a lot of questions, and it's like, oh, some, some's in trouble, so you're good.
I'm good if you're good.
Yeah. Yeah, seeing no other additional questions, I think that's it. Thanks for central services.
Well, I thank you very much for your time.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
We'll now transition to Rexon Park. I assure you, there's going to be a lot of questions on this department.
Good morning. It is the morning.
Yes.
You good? Hi, I'm Jessica Lay, the Director for Recreation and Parks, and I have with me today the Deputy Director, Erica Matthews, and our Chief of Business Operations, Lisa D., as well as our lovely Budget Analyst, Darlene. We're going to run through our operating budget first and then dive into our capital budget, so I'll go ahead and get started.
Let me, if I could, direct you to page 237 in the Expanse Budget Book for the first page.
Awesome. So, next slide. Real quick, I put into your presentation just a reminder of our mission statement, which is to create opportunities to enjoy life, explore nature, and restore health and mental well-being. The next slide is our organizational chart, which is just a pictorial of how we operate. Just like our title indicates, we are Recreation and Parks. We have two large bureaus on the rec side and the park side that have many programs that roll up to them, as well as internal bureaus, the business office, the capital division, and our marketing and communications division. You're going to learn a lot more about them when we get to the bureau pages. So the next slide is kind of our story. What do we do? It's a visual of how we serve the public, and the analytical side of me loves that the numbers tell the story on their own. We've got about 12,000 acres of parkland, which is a total of 160 parks. That's not only your six regional parks, but also your 130 community parks, many of which are in your neighborhoods. And we have done that intentional so people can get to their parks easily. We have 244 miles of trails, that's both paved and natural trails. We also have mountain biking trails and equestrian trails. Altogether, about 2,700 park amenities. We serve over 3 million visitors in our park system, and those are only the ones we count, which are in our regional parks and in the parks that we have counters. This is not counting everybody that comes out to like your neighborhood park, that's not paying a fee to get in, maybe is going for a walk or bringing their dog to a dog park or participating in a sports event. So we touch a lot of different lives every single day. We have two aquatic centers, we have two golf courses, and we have two ice skating rinks in which serves hundreds of thousands of residents every year. We have about 140,000 registered program participants in the current year. We also host sports leagues throughout the year, and it's about 100, it's about 1,000 teams altogether, which represents hundreds of thousands of kids in Anaronda County. Our childcare is one of our most popular programs, and this year we served about 2,600 children, but we had a very large waitlist of about 1,400 kids this year. Again, we'll talk about those statistics when we get to the childcare bureau. The department has about 1,000 employees. Only 140 of them are full-time employees. We employ over 850 part-time seasonal hourly wage employees to get our job done. Last year's budget was a huge success for the department. We had almost $40 million on the operating side. This council approved 10 new full-time positions that we deployed out into Beverly Triton Nature Park, which is opening this week. We created a fourth maintenance yard to better serve the residents of Anaronda County in all of our park maintenance. We increased the manager, the program managers in the CIP side to keep up with the growing capital project, and we added full-time supervisors to both our North Aquatic Swim Center and our South County Rec Center. We also transferred two part-time employees to full-time. That was the South County position and a position in the business office. We thank you for your support last year, and this year is really year two of rightsizing our department and bringing it up to standards so that we can meet the needs of the public. On the capital side, we have about $99 million, almost $100 million in FY23. It's a lot of work, and you're going to see as we go through the pages of the capital budget, we have a lot of great things happening in Anaronda County this year. The next slide is just our accomplishments, but rather than read the words, I'd like to show you the pictures. So if you go to the next slide, you will see we've had some great success in the last fiscal year. We completed the turf product, project at Joe Cannon Stadium, which allowed us to have more games and serve more people, both high schools and colleges play at Joe Cannon. We also reopened the Greenhaven Wharf in Pasadena, which was brought to us by a resident of Pasadena that was really tired of looking at the slum of the wharf and brought to our attention that it just needed a little TLC and love. We made it fully ADA compliant, which is very, very appreciated by the local residents that live in that area, that now they can use the wharf on a regular basis. We opened the amphitheater at Downs Park as part of our 40th anniversary at Downs Park, and we also kicked off the Community Park Playground Initiative, which was our promise to update up to 25 community parks, making them ADA compliant and accessible by utilizing state funds. The next slide is going to show you some more great pictures of what we accomplished. The reopening of the renovated field at Hot Sox Field in Galesville. We reopened 50 childcare centers to start the 2022 school year. This was a huge accomplishment for our childcare division. As we were coming out of the pandemic, the demand was high and the workforce was very challenging. We completed our five-year plan called the Land Preservation, Parks, and Recreation Plan, better known as the LPPIP, in which each of you participated in, helped connect us to your communities, and brought back feedback that helps us lay the groundwork and the framework for the next five years for the department. We reopened Bacon Ridge Natural Area with a skills park. Those bikers down on the bottom are there every single day, riding their mountain bikes in a controlled environment where they can learn how to take the more complicated twists and turns throughout Bacon Ridge. We also started the construction on the WBNA Trail Bridge that goes over the Protuxent River that will link Anaronda County and PG County, a great example of a partnership between county jurisdictions. And this week, we will be opening the Beverly Triton Nature Park with a ribbon cutting on Friday. Now getting to the boring stuff, the budget book. So page 238 in the proposed budget book shows you an overview of our department, and the biggest takeaways from this chart is just that we have two major funds. We have our general fund and we have our childcare fund. There is also a grant fund that was housing our IPR money, but typically, the Department of Recreation and Parks doesn't have a lot of grants that comes through it. The federal recovery money was, was unique. What I want to point out on this page is that when you go down to the object level, if you add the personal services and the contractual services, it's about $35 million, $36 million, which is almost 90% of our budget. All of the money that you approve hits the ground. These are the people that are doing the work. These are the employees, these are the temp seasonal, these are the contractual people, whether it's our porta pott contracts or our mowing contracts, all of our money goes to providing the services. It goes to the people. The next page on 239 is a snapshot of our budgeted positions in the classified service. This is the 147 positions that I was talking about in the earlier slide that we rely on on a full-time basis. We also have 300 part-time seasonal positions in the childcare fund and a, about 500 part-time seasonals in the general fund. All those wonderful positions that I told you that we got in FY23, this year we're looking to add to the position control with one superintendent for resource conservation and protection that currently rolls up to the trails division. And as you saw in the statistics, we are responsible for a lot of trails, so it's a lot of work for one division. By piecing this out, we'll be able to better serve our public on the natural trails and the resource conservation. The big ask is six new positions for maintenance worker choose. This goes both countywide to increase our maintenance worker positions to serve all of our parks, those community parks that we talked about, in which you get a lot of phone calls about cleaning up the trash, cutting the grass, getting out there, making them beautiful, as well as full-time maintenance workers at Lake Waterford, who currently has no full-time maintenance worker position, and at trails to keep up with the demands and the increase in the number of trails that we have built in the last couple of years. The last new position is a new park ranger for trails to make our trails more safe and have more presence on the trail on a regular basis, specifically in areas where the trail may be high crime or a hangout area where we can have park rangers on bikes making their rounds to keep it safe for all users. The other thing you see that happens in this classified service is that we have two positions that are transferring to the department, or the Office of Planning and Zoning. That's our agricultural preservation program. Over the years, agricultural preservation has had many homes, most recently in the Department of Recreation and Parks. The program specialist that leads that program is retiring in the next 30 days, and it's just a better fit for OPZ. It falls more under the umbrella of zoning than it does in Recreation and Parks, so we're transferring that vacancy as well as the planner to position over to OPZ. That'll get you to the net increase of four on this page. The next page is 240. This is our Director's Office budget. The Director's Office is the smallest budget for our department. It's about 12% of the general fund, and what you see there is the Director's Office, the Capital Division, and the Business Office, as well as our Marketing and Communications Office. There's very little change here. You see the, the larger decrease is due to the transfer of those two positions that I just mentioned, as well as a large decrease in the recognition of a grant in this bureau, and that was the grant that we had gotten to purchase vehicles and maintenance equipment from the recovery funds. The next page, am I even talking yet? The next page is 241 in your budget book. That is the Bureau of Recreation. It makes up about 30% of our general fund. Again, the biggest piece of this is the people. The increase that you see in the last column is primarily due to the pay package, but we're also rolling out a new amenity called the Deep Run Community Center that's off of Dorsey Road in Glenburnie. This building has always been in the county inventory, but most recently, the Department of Recreation and Parks has taken on the building in order to provide more recreational activities in an area of the county where it's most needed, and perhaps in the future may even be able to provide some childcare. So the increases that you see is both personnel and program operations to provide those services in North County. The next page is our Parks Bureau. It is our largest bureau of the department at $13.5 million. It makes up 41% of our general fund. The big change here is those six new positions that I just spoke about in our position control, as well as adding money for Kinder Farm Park to have a part-time seasonal to coordinate the farm operations. It is a unique farm that has its own personality with farm animals, and it's something that we're not very good at, at Recreation and Parks. So hiring this person will get us better at providing the veterinarian care and the standards necessary to have a successful farm park. We've also added some veterinarian money in this bureau to help with that. The other initiative in this budget is $35,000 for a volunteer coordinator. This will work specifically with our friends group. A lot of our parks have friends group, there are friends groups for the trails. We have a lot of foundations and friends groups that support our department. While we might have a large workforce of 1,000 employees, we simply could not do it without all of our volunteers, and so this coordinator will help us better coordinate those volunteer opportunities and better coordinate with the friends groups to maximize the use of our volunteers. The next slide is our golf courses. This is pretty straightforward increase. It makes up about 17% of our total budget. It is manned by a consultant, and the increase that is requested is a 6% pay increase on their employees. My next slide is childcare, and so in the childcare bureau, you have a special fund, which means that we charge for all of the services that we provide, and therefore, it is self-sustaining. Anytime we give a pay increase or we increase the amount of personnel, it usually warrants an increase in fees. Over the pandemic, we tried very hard to hold our fees as low as possible because the demand was extraordinary and people were struggling. Coming into FY24, you see very little increase to the line items. What we have done is we've tried to adjust as much as we can in order to absorb the pay package across the board. Last year's $15 an hour pay increase to seasonal employees was hugely supportive and appreciated by the childcare staff, as it's the only reason why we were able to fully outfit our childcare and open up all 50 centers. The demand for PM care is still extremely high with the school hour change. Most people no longer need morning care, they need afternoon care because they either do not have the older sibling at home to babysit their younger sibling, or they need the coverage for a longer period of the day in the afternoon as the youngest kids are getting out of school earlier than they used to. The next slide kind of shows you some of the changes coming in childcare. Currently, we're opening, we're currently, today, we're opening 49 of our 50, and that's because we shut down one morning program that didn't have high participation. We've been shifting our staff around as much as we can to maximize capacities. We are under MSDE regulations, so we have to have a certain ratio of childcare employees to students, and we've done our very best to make sure that we're in compliance at all times while maximizing the amount of spaces that we can provide. So not only have we adapted to the change of school hours, but we've also adapted to the workforce and the challenges of bringing in good qualified people, getting them licensed to be able to work in our child cares and open up as many spaces as possible. We have an aggressive goal going into the next school year to have at least 200 new spots available, and we're about halfway there from a staffing level perspective, so we're very optimistic that we will continue to grow our programs and meet the capacities that we can. We are looking to open our school locations earlier at 6:30. That will increase demand, give parents a little bit more flexibility to getting to work, and also providing the staff extra time to work. Right now, it's very hard to get a staff member to come in and work for one hour in the morning. We've partnered with the school system. The new superintendent has been extremely supportive in cross-hiring. If you are a lunch monitor or a aide, you can work for us in the morning, go over to the school, work in the afternoon for the school, and then come back for the evening care, PM care, and work for us. So we've done a lot of joint job fairs and a lot of recruitment together in order to maximize the, the workforce. We're going to see a slight increase in our fee in FY23. We're going to go up $25 a month, which we have already floated out to our participants, and we have gotten very little pushback for. That'll generate about $1 million of revenues and help us balance the funds so that we can operate on the positive. That concludes my operating side of the budget. If there are any questions on the operating budget before we jump over to the capital side.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you. I have two questions. One is regarding Slide 9, the six new positions. How many vacancies do you currently have in the department?
So we've been very successful with vacancies. I think right now, we might have four vacancies. Two are in maintenance workers, which we are heavily recruiting for. We have a chief of marketing and communications vacant, and I believe we might have a, and you have a position vacant, we have a business office position vacant. So, so as much as the workforce has been difficult, people love working for Recreation and Parks. We get good candidates, and we bring people in, and they tend to stay a long time. It's the lower-level temp seasonal positions because they have no benefits and they have no long longevity. Those are the hardest to recruit for.
Understood, thank you. May I ask a follow-up?
Please.
So in that list with a maintenance worker, I believe, maybe two, the maintenance workers, and this situation comes to mind, I reach out to you all a little bit before every baseball season, would a maintenance worker, do that work on baseball fields, readying the fields, or would that be specifically the incidentals, or not really incidentals, like the fences and the, the building facilities?
It's a mix of both. It's a mix of both. So we give maintenance grants to our community users. So if there's an athletic group that is responsible for that community park, then they are maintaining the baseball fields and the soccer fields, the multipurpose fields. Wreckin' Parks maintenance crews are coming in and fixing the infrastructure. If there is a fence broken, if there's something done, the parking lots, the buildings, your restroom buildings, your warehouses. However, there are some parks that don't have good maintenance groups, or don't have groups that get a maintenance grant from us that our crews are responsible for going out and mowing and maintaining. So it's kind of a hybrid.
Great. Thank you.
Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you. I do that every time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I want to ask about the balance in the contractual work with porta-potties versus having our facilities, our building, bathroom buildings, open on a more consistent basis in our community parks. Every department gets a lot of emails from District Two. We're very engaged in our community, and we have a lot of community members that would like to see the facilities that have been built with county tax dollars actually open for use. I know we have user groups that maintain parks, and I know this conversation isn't a surprise to y'all at the table, but I really want to see the county move towards maintaining those buildings so people who aren't involved in a baseball tournament but just want to use the trail or the playground can use a flushing toilet and not be at the mercy of a basically gross porta-potty. You know, when you're at a soccer tournament, you expect to have to use a porta-potty. But when you go to a county maintained park, I would like to see the county move towards having those bathrooms opened outside of the hours that the, the baseball club or the youth sports organization is there. So that's a goal I'd like to see us get to. And those contracts were quite difficult, I know, during COVID and in the summertime, and I had a lot of complaints. But it's just fascinating that there's a locked building right next door and a parent with a child that needs restroom facilities being relegated to that disgusting porta-potty. What do you think about that?
I was waiting for the question. So I'm, I say the word porta-pots way more often than you ever would think that someone at my level would say. Porta-pots have been a huge challenge, absolutely. Our contractors, I, we have a lot of them, and after the, the COVID pandemic, their business was not booming, so keeping good contractors and good services has been very challenging. On top of that, we don't have the staff to maintain and to man all of the concession stands, restroom buildings in a hundred and thirty parks, to open them up every morning, close them, clean them, maintain them. So we rely heavily on the community groups. It's part of their maintenance grant. When they get a maintenance grant, they also get the key to the building, and they say, you're responsible now for opening and closing it. We do turn off the water in season, out of season, so that the pipes don't freeze, and we do do the maintenance to the building, but we don't, we don't operate those buildings. Policy decision-wise, it's a really expensive decision. To have a standalone bathroom in a community building is about a five-hundred thousand dollar investment to build the building, and then you're looking at about forty to fifty thousand dollars a year to man that building, keep it on, have a person go, buy the supplies, that if we multiply that out, it's just been more financially responsible to have a porta-potty and a restroom building, have the user group open up the restroom building during hours that they might be hosting games, or they have community events, and we bring in the porta-pot for the after-hours that we don't have the people there in order to man it. There is no perfect solution. The equation has a lot of variables that are constantly moving, including, you know, the, the contractors that we get being responsive or not responsive, and different user groups have different operating models. We have some user groups that do a great job of getting a volunteer out there to open it up every Saturday morning at eight AM, so it's open all day long, and they come back at the end of the night and lock it back up. We have other user groups that only have someone out there when they're playing their game, and it's only unlocked for a couple of hours a day while that volunteer that's trusted with the key can get in and out of there. So I don't have a perfect answer for it. We're trying the best we can with the resources we have to keep as many buildings open and keep as many porta-pots out in the field to have adequate facilities.
Please, oh, please, because I'm, I'm backing you up on this one.
Oh, good. I just think it's a lot to ask of our user groups who are there to maintain sports fields when we have other constituents, residents of the county that are looking to use our parks and have a positive experience at our parks that aren't related to youth sports. I just think it's something the county and, and the department needs to be shifting The maintenance grant, I understand how the maintenance grant system is a force multiplier for the Department of Wreckin' Parks, but it's, it's a, it is still a di- difficult endeavor, and looking at base, the, the, the cost of those maintenance grants, but also relying on volunteers to maintain our parks can be frustrating. It's not, there's not as, there's not as much fidelity park to park. But ultimately, this conversation I started was really about the non-youth sports attendee having an open bathroom in a publicly provided park. I think we need to work on that, and I don't know what the answer is, and I, I realize it's probably a financial answer, but it's something I think as a county, we, we should work towards. And I'm all in.
So I just want to just, you know, cheerlead for her comment, because I think it's a, you know, I've, I've heard it a number of times from constituents throughout the year, even, even previously when I served in this capacity, about, you know, they go to the park and the dang, you know, the, the bathroom is locked. And so we have this asset, but only a, a small group of folks actually get to use it. So it drives me nuts when, even when I go there with my own kids, and the dang-on doors locked. So I get it. The other piece that you, you mentioned that really, really irks me, not you necessarily, but when you said the five hundred thousand for either a concession stand or a bathroom, and the fact that we have to spend half a million dollars, or, yeah, five hundred thousand dollars, on a twelve-by-twelve box infuriates me. And I can't wait for us this summer to, to talk about the capital, because a twelve-by-twelve box with a sink or, or, or a toilet should not cost a half a million dollars, literally. And so if we can somehow get that cost down, maybe we free up money right there to, to work on the operating side of it and the maintenance of it, because it, it literally is like a hundred square feet, if, if not smaller, and it shouldn't take half a million dollars to build a hundred square feet, period. I'll build it for free, just, so just let me know the, the, the days, and I'll be out there to help out. But I see Mr. Volkey also wanted to come in as well.
I'm going to join Mr. Smith in building that twelve-by-twelve box. No, I do have some other questions, but, but I, I echo that it shouldn't cost that much. I'm probably getting ahead of myself, but I'm just going to tee up for Ms. Matthews. I'll be asking you about prevailing wage when we get to capital and how much that's impacted things, because I do think that that has impacted the five hundred thousand dollar costs to build a building like this. With that said, so we have an issue that I've addressed with Wreckin' Parks a few times about just sort of similar, but not exactly the same, right? Not the same as the bathrooms, but just making sure gates are open at parks and different things like that in places. Specifically, Lake Waterford is one that I've addressed a few times to Wreckin' Parks. I know you guys are working on it, so I'm not trying to beat you up on it, but I think it's a similar concept of if the amenity is there, let's try to make sure we have that amenity accessible. If we have the lower parking lots at Lake Waterford and they're closed and people can't park there to get right next to the water feature, then kind of defeats the point of Lake Waterford a little bit. And it makes it tougher for people who are there. That is an ADA park, you know that. I mean, they've got the field, they've got the playground up there, so that's great. So that's more a comment than a question. My question is this. I am one of the people who is on the waitlist for the childcare and have been for a year. So for everybody who thinks just because we're on the council, automatically we get all these benefits, no, I've been waiting, waiting, waiting. And, and as much as I love the daycare, my son's daycare closes at four in the afternoon, which is very inconvenient, so that six o'clock is huge. So I just raise that to you because the more you can do to expand that program, the more people like me and others situated are going to appreciate it. And, and I don't ever say this about anything, but I'm going to say it about this. If it costs more money, this is one thing that I am willing to pay a little more for.
Take, take note of that.
Write that down, write that down. I mean, I literally went to the daycare at my son's daycare and said, please charge us more money to stay open more. Like, do what you have to do. This is just so inconvenient for families. So do what you have to do, but the more you can expand that.
Little prestige of office going on there?
Well, I'm just, I'm just pressing, I'm just asking. I'm somewhere on the waitlist, way down at the bottom. Is there anything that we can do, though? This is the real question, to help you with the childcare options? Because I see you're running this in about fifty schools, there are about eighty elementary schools, so that's clearly not all of them. I know there are private providers who are filling in the gap in some places, but specifically, is there anything we can do? Because this is a huge issue that I hear from many, many people about, who have school-age kids who are struggling with childcare. So that's my question. Finally got there.
So we have looked at a lot of different options. If you remember, in FY twenty-three, we took over the open-door childcare, which is one of the nonprofits that were operating in ten of the facilities. And that was a big overtaking, especially coming out of COVID, where we had very limited workforce. Right now, our priority is maximizing the licenses that we have before we expand the programs. But we've had a lot of really great conversations with the new superintendent and with some of the principals about expanding programs out of just the sack rooms into cafeterias and gymnasiums. We just don't want to grow so big that then we have to shut down things because we're not in capacity. So it's like this, this balancing act of we have to make sure we have enough people to provide the services per the license before we start rolling out new locations. So I do think the future is expansion in the physical space. It's just making sure that we have the staffing to support that before we roll those out. And we are working through that waiting list. The process is that if you're already in childcare, you register first and you get priority treatment, and then we look at the siblings bringing on board, and then we work through the waitlist. And with opening up two hundred new spots, hopefully you're one of those two hundred, but there's no promises. It's all a process.
Understood. Thank you. I think you were lucky more first.
I just wanted to remind Mr. Volkey, a few years ago, we had the opportunity to elevate the childcare director position, and I believe that also helped elevate their pay. And so surely that has at least, you know, helped keep things in a more positive direction than they would have been, and I'm sure pay is probably, you know, one of the biggest ways to suc- to successfully recruit more folks. So if Director Lays has, you know, any other options of what the council could do, but I suspect pay is probably number one.
Those fifteen positions were instrumental. They go to our largest childcare facilities, and now that they're full-time, we're not constantly filling them. And that consistency, that longevity helps the entire program as we push it out, that we're not only hiring part-time seasonal directors and assistant directors, but we have full-time stability at the director level. So that was hugely successful. And the fifteen dollar an hour, I think, was the game changer for us being able to staff. Most jurisdictions did not open all of their childcares the first year after the pandemic. Most of them were at fifty to sixty-five percent open, where we opened up all fifty of them, and we wouldn't have been able to do that without having the fifteen dollar an hour change in minimum wage, as our healthcare employees were making minimal wage.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you. I'm going to go back to the porta-potty conversation because I'm so intrigued by it, and it, it made me remember that we were at Mako together, and you were a speaker in the Recreation and Parks Forum. And on the seat of all the attendees was a brochure for a fancy pot. I, you remember, it was very Jetson-like, and if you're, if you grew up watching the Jetsons, the Jetsons were very forward-thinking, a lot of what they had in their shows has come to fruition. However, this was a pot that, like, self-cleaned. I think it had a tank with it. Is that something that we've looked into? I'm guessing it's not really cheap.
So we have looked at a lot of different alternatives, and that was an alternative where it's a self-sustainable, it's nicer than a porta-pot, so we would never call it the porta-pot, we would find a new name for it. And that particular company has, where you don't need the infrastructure, you don't need the plumbing, you don't need the electricity, which is unfortunately what drives up the cost on the building, is not necessarily the brick-and-mortar building, but all of the connections to the building. And it is smart, so you have like a QR code, it lets you in and out, you, you know if someone's vandalized it, because you know kind of how often it's being used, what hours it's open, you can lock it for certain hours and open it up remotely, so we don't need the people and the salary, and it is definitely an alternative. The, the, it's preliminary, a lot of people are just starting to look at it, and it is hugely expensive right now from an operating perspective. If we were to replace all of our porta-pots with that, it would be larger than my operating budget in its entirety. So we're waiting for the cost to come down as they become more popular and sustainable, but I do think thinking outside the box, pun intended, is necessary, that maybe it isn't the brick-and-mortar building, maybe it's not the fancy, smart tech bathroom that talks to you, but it's somewhere in between. And that is something that we are currently working on and has been a recommendation of the Rec Advisory Board for us to look at alternatives, ways to bring better facilities to all of our park system.
I'm glad to know that you all are thinking about that and thinking outside of the pot.
She queued up. So I'll, I'll bring my extension cord to help with the electricity piece on that. I see the, Madam, Madam Vice Chair?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, just based on what Ms. Fiedler said, it, it just got my mind thinking about putting a coded door lock on the facilities we already have, where you could look up the code to the bathroom would be, you know, maybe a hundred dollar expense. Again, thinking outside the pot, because porta-potties are disgusting. But what I really wanted to talk about is the staffing within the Wreckin' Parks, both some of the staffing and, and processes. Are we, are we moving forward in digitizing some of our Wreckin' Parks and youth sports, putting field availability up on a website? Are we moving towards a more sophisticated use and working towards better communication and policy fidelity and relationships between our youth sports organizations and our Wreckin' Parks staff? Because I can't give out my cellphone anymore to people in youth sports, but I am very engaged with all of my District Two youth sports organizations on a sometimes daily basis, and I just keep sending them back to you.
Yes. So, so we've definitely been in a phase of modernization, especially on the youth sports side. We wrote out team sports in the spring of two thousand and twenty-two, and it was a huge disaster. So we learned from those mistakes, and we updated it and made it more user-friendly, and, and we used it this year for football as a pilot program. It does all of the scheduling for you, it takes your forms electronically, so you don't have to sign them and, and mail them back in or drop them off at the office, and that has been successful. We're now in a different phase of that, where we're looking for not only the coaches and the organizations to use it, but how can the end user, the parents, the players, use team sports, whether it's downloading their schedule or requesting a chain? But if anything else, when you create something yourselves, something that's not out of the box and, and you create your own rules, there's always going to be trial and error. So it has been slow and painful, but we are making progress, and I think that's going to help the relationships greatly. We are also revamping our accreditation process and our manual on the youth sports side. We just hosted a webinar two weeks ago to start getting that out to the public and getting input from the public about how we can do that better, specifically with field reservations and the demands on our field for all user groups. So I think we're making progress. It's just, it's not going to be overnight, but eventually we will be more modernized, we will have better communications, have less human error, and less communication problems. You know, with a manual process, you're looking at the department talking to a commissioner at a youth organization, then talking to a coach, that then has to talk to twenty-some players' parents, like, the, the message gets lost in translation. And so that's really hard to fix without bringing in a more global communication model, and hopefully, technology can help us with that.
Thank you.
Okay. I think you're going to transition to capital?
Oh, we have fifty more slides to do on the capital side, so let's, let's dive in.
Can I make a statement before we move on to the next part? I just wanted to disclose for the record that I do have a conflict of interest when it comes to interaction with London Town, historic London Town. I have a family member who sits on the Board of Trustees, and that board does business with Wreckin' Parks. So I would, I'm cleared from the Ethics Commission having a general discussion about capital budget, but anything specifically related to London Town, I would need to recuse myself from that discussion. but anything specifically related to London Town, I would need to recuse myself from that discussion.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to hand it over to Erica Matthews, who is going to walk us through the lovely Capitol side of our department. Am I first? Oh, I'm in first. Okay. So next, I think, two more slides. First, we're going to go through the P-class, and then we do have two C-class. And we always forget it at the end, because we're so exhausted that then we just say we're done, but don't let me forget our two C-class. Next slide. So, uh, very similar to the operating side. Obviously, our park and trail visitation numbers being over three million have had a toll on the infrastructure of our park system at Recreation and Parks. While FY twenty-three was a huge investment to that infrastructure, we still have a lot of work to do. Not just on building new things, but taking care of the things that we already own. Making sure that we're investing in the existing infrastructure at the same rate that we're investing, um, in new infrastructure. What you see in the Capitol budget this year, um, is a request of ninety million dollars, which is slightly below the FY twenty-four approved program of ninety-six million dollars and is significantly lower than the twenty-three approved budget of a hundred million dollars. We continue to seek outside funding for all of our projects. That might be a grant, that might be a private partnership. We are always putting out our feelers for other ways to help fund this that are not bonds or pay go. This year, we anticipate twenty percent of our, uh, budget requests to be grant-funded. That is up from last year's fourteen percent. And that's really exciting for us as we continue to make partners and commitments to future projects. We're moving most of our projects into construction and, and maintenance improvements. The out-years of our budget always fluctuate. So when we come to council, we like to highlight the changes in the budget. Unfortunately, that's on most every one of our projects, because when you build a Capitol budget, um, it's a plan. It's a plan for what we think we're going to do. And as we move closer from feasibility to design cost and construction phases, that plan becomes more concrete, and then we know what the costs are. So it's really frustrating sometimes on our side that we don't have a lot of new staff. We only have one new project for you today. But every project has changed, and therefore we do go through all of the projects to give you the background of them. Next slide, where does this ninety million dollars go? Well, this year, there's a recurring theme, construction. It's really important to point out that in FY twenty-three, we had about forty million dollars of that hundred million dollars that was construction. Only forty percent of our budget was actually a shovel in the ground. In FY twenty-four, roughly seventy-two million dollars is construction. So we have an eighty percent construction budget. What does that mean? That means that, um, after years and years of planning, sometimes decades, we're finally getting stuff done. And that's really exciting, um, for the department to see what was an idea then become a reality. What else is very fascinating about this slide is the diversity of what's coming up in construction. And I think that speaks volumes about the decisions that have been made by the administration and by this council. We have things like shoreline repair, we have new parks, we have expansion of parks, we have park maintenance, we have, um, golf and fields, we have a lot of ADA improvements. If you remember, a few years ago, we spoke to you about doing an ADA study, and it came up with thousands of deficiencies. We're starting to chip away at that. Um, we're even building camping areas. So while, yeah, the, the budget is very large, it's also very diverse, and it serves a great variety of people in Anaronda County. We could not do this alone. We give a lot of credit to DPW, who really work hard with us to get as many projects into affordability as we can get the Budget Office for helping us balance these projects. We have a lot of competing priorities, so they're not easy decisions. It's not easy decisions to say no to things, because there is a user group out there that feels like that should be our most important thing. So we're very excited and happy about this budget, and we hope that we have your support. Erica's going to dive into the detail. I will warn you, it's a lot of information. But as you all know, we get caused daily, sometimes from you, about these projects. So the more you understand the projects, the easier the next thirty to sixty days are in deliberating over this budget. If it's too much detailing, you want us to speed up, we can certainly fly through. We're going to give you a what is the project, what's the status of the project, and what are the change, or what's the money we're asking for. Are you ready? Great, first project.
Next slide, please. Our Capitol projects start on page one-eleven of the budget book. Next slide, please. Again, these are projects that are previously funded. We're going to start with South Shore Trail on page one-eleven. It's P three-seven-two-hundred. This fourteen-mile trail that, once completed, will extend between Annapolis and Odenton. Phase two is at the construction design stage, and we anticipate going into construction summer of two thousand and twenty-three. The design for phase four is underway. In fiscal twenty-four, we are requesting eleven million five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, which is the remainder. This is the money that will be used to begin the design of phase three and begin the construction of phase four. In fiscal twenty-five, we anticipate having no request, as we will be in design or construction for phases two through four. The request for fiscal twenty-six is anticipated to be fourteen million six hundred and ten thousand dollars. That will include a three-million-dollar tap grant and will be used for the construction of phase three. The fiscal twenty-seven program is to complete a feasibility study for the Route Three crossing that would connect phases one and two. A request of half a million dollars is anticipated at that time. There is no request for fiscal twenty-eight at this time, as we will still be in the study for the Route Three crossing to be completed. Next slide, please. WBNA Trail. This is a nine-mile trail system that, when completed, the project will link the South Shore Trail in Odenton with the Patuxent River and an existing trail rail, an existing rail trail in Prince George's County. Phases one to three are fully complete and operational. Roughly half of phase four is open. There is approximately one-point-nine miles of phase four to complete. The bridge construction identified as phase five is under construction. The feasibility study to identify right-of-way needed to complete phase four from Wildchapel Road to South Shore Trail, phase two is underway. In fiscal twenty-four, we will begin the design and right-of-way of acquisitions and permitting for phase four. We are requesting one million one hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. The full construction funds will be requested in fiscal twenty-six. Next slide, please. Greenways Parkland and Open Space. This is the account where the department acquires new property. We are requesting six million dollars this year. We anticipate four million dollars from program open space for the acquisition, plus an additional million dollars dedicated of county money. The county funds will be used for non-POS, which is program open space-related expenses, to expand greenways and meet the preservation goals detailed in the Green Infrastructure Plan and the LP PRP. The anticipated funding reflects funds we anticipate from POS. This number will be revised each year based on the county's allocation. Future years will continue to purchase land based on those projections and support recreational and conservation needs. Next slide, please. Facility Lighting. This is an ongoing multi-year project to repair, replace, or install new lighting systems for court games and athletic fields within county parks or school properties to accommodate existing and expanded play. In fiscal twenty-three, the projects to be completed include Lakeshore to install new lights on the ninety-foot diamond in one multipurpose field. Bockens replacement lights are completed. Lights will be added to General's Highway on a multipurpose field, and Broadneck was also included with the lights on a multipurpose field. The request for fiscal twenty-four is for Northeast Middle School with Board of Approval to add lights to the ninety-foot baseball diamond, Sunset Park's multipurpose field, and another facility at Riva Area Park. Next slide, please. Recreation and Parks Planning. This is an ongoing multi-year project that allows the department to explore the feasibility for potential projects on the screen of the current list of projects that we're working on. The indoor sports complex study is being modified to include big box buildings. So when somebody comes to us with a vacant building, we go in and we study whether or not we can put our proposed plan inside of an existing structure. Uh, the LP PRP was completed. The unused parks concept is underway. We're studying about eight county properties that are underutilized. Um, it includes the Pumphrey property, and we've also added leftover land from Board of Education. Valentine Creek's Water Assessment is also underway. The latest concept has been shared with the stakeholders. If we get positive feedback on a much more reduced scope than what was presented previously, there will be public engagement where we talk about adding water resources, uh, water access at that location. Tanyard Springs, this concept is closed. There's an actual project later on that discusses it. Lake Waterford ADA Compliance and the Skate Park, that's done, and that's, that's our new project that we'll be presenting later on. Greenberry Park, we did a concept for a passive park there. Bayhead Park Bike Feasibility Study, that's underway. South River Farm Park Master Plan Update. So we talked about in the past, that there's been concern about the Mayo Master Plan. And we said we would go back and take a look at elements of that master plan as we move through the parks in that network. One of those parks happens to be South River Farm Park. With DPW leaving the Mayo WRF site, we're moving our maintenance guys to their vacant buildings. So there's sort of a reoccurring theme that we take any and every building that seems to be left over in the county's inventory, and we try to put staff or programming in there. So with that, and the pier needing to be replaced, and there's another youth, I'm sorry, there's another biking activity sell-across that happens at South River, this is the perfect time for us to go back, because there's an operational change that's happening in the park for us to study some of the elements at South River Farm Park. Uh, we hope to start that public engagement this summer. Last way is Gateway Park. This is a project that we'll be working with the City of Annapolis on to begin trying to identify a location for a boathouse or additional water access that both, uh, the city and the county residents can enjoy. Next slide, please.
Oh, Mr. Chair. Can I ask a question on that slide before you move on, since there are so many, so you don't have to back up? For the Bayhead Park feasibility, I know DPW was trying to figure out the county boundary lines. Is that portion complete, and now it's within your department?
So where we are right now is that we are waiting for, there was a contract negotiation for the consultant to get started. So once the consultant gets started, we should have a concept probably by summer for what that could look like, to include the BMX use at that site.
Okay, so DPW's portion is completed?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
There we go. So in fiscal twenty-three, I'm sorry, fiscal twenty-four, we're asking for one million three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars to complete various studies. Uh, one of the big ones that we want to look at is multi-use trails, uh, natural trails, and we're focusing on the area between Bacon Ridge and Crownsville, and then from Bacon Ridge to Waterworks. So this would basically connect from all the way from Annapolis to Crownsville or natural off-road trails if we're successful. We want to complete an assessment of the Davidsonville Rec Center, because that campus is in need of major repairs. Um, it's a little bit outdated, and we're to the point where we need to make a financial decision on whether we prepare, demolish, and start all over. So that's what that study will focus on. The Edgewater Community and Recreation Center, uh, we're looking to expand and add a recreation and community center in that area. The Glen Burnie Regional Park, this is to review current underutilized park sites in the Glen Burnie region to determine a location that may be suitable for a larger community park. Um, we are still working with South and Central Counties for state skate parks. Uh, we want to start studying Severn Danza for park expansion, and then we also leave money for projects that may arise. This project has been extended to fiscal twenty-nine, and out-years will be requested based on the projects that we need to study. Next slide, please. School Outdoor Recreation Facilities. This is to design and construct recreational improvements on the Board of Property, I'm sorry, Board of Ed property to support recreational needs. Our request is consistent with previous years of three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. And again, this extends the program out to fiscal twenty-nine. Next slide, please. Stream Shoreline Erosion Control. This project seeks to preserve the county's investment of waterfront properties. This project will have a change in title and description. This project is being expanded to include stream restoration work that's different than what the Bureau of Watershed does. These are projects and streams that are located in park properties. It's also being changed so that the targeted areas are being removed, and we're making this a county-wide project. We're trying to make a huge investment, um, to maintain our shorelines. And we're also begun conversations with the Resilience Authority to determine if there are any grant-funds opportunities available to help us as we move forward with this. This is a pretty large project, and I'll go through this as quickly as I can. Fiscal twenty-three, Smallwood is in performance. Spriggs Farms, the design is underway. Lake Waterford, the permitting for the shoreline and dredging are underway. Mayo will go into construction with funds this summer. Hancock Shoreline, we just had a public meeting on that. Construction is funded. Downs is, uh, the design is underway to repair the damage to the shoreline behind the amphitheater. And then London Town Shoreline, that design is also underway. Next slide, please.
Oh, sorry. Spriggs Farm, we'll have to go through the same process again, correct? The state will have to approve?
So where we are with Spriggs Farms is that we're taking a different approach to the state. Throughout the process of this, there were submerged aquatic vegetation was
Wow.
was discovered. There was question about, we were trying to maintain the same square footage of beach area, but we kind of had it in a different location. They don't really want the beach, but we still need to have the water access. So we have now gone back to the state with that same permit and a new proposal, and we're waiting to see if we can get approval of that. And then, because there were some changes, go back to the public and have an information session to update everybody on this one. This has been a long-going process. I mean, it, some of it is the permitting time, the agencies get six months to review, and then they can request extensions. So we've had some where they've asked for a hundred and eighty days on top of the first one hundred and eighty days to review. So we just stay on it to try to move it forward.
I, I appreciate the effort that you all have made. I think that storm that went through there that did all of the damage was in two thousand and nineteen. So thank you for all the work that you're doing on that project.
Right, the fiscal twenty-four request, in fiscal twenty-four, we're seeking seven million one hundred and twenty-nine thousand for the design and construction of shoreline improvements. Uh, these funds would be used for, to complete Downs Park, London Town. Fingers crossed, Spriggs is in construction with previous money. Quiet Waters Park and Jonas Green Shorelines are new projects that we're going to start the design for those two areas. Uh, the next slide, please, uh, for the out-years. Again, this project is extended to fiscal twenty-nine. It shows that we hopefully will be in construction for Quiet Waters and Jonas Greens, and then additional programs or projects will be requested for fiscals twenty-seven to twenty-nine as needed. Next slide, please.
Park Reno. So Park Reno is an ongoing multi-year, um, request. We are not only trying to keep up with our aging facilities, but we're also trying to build a realistic maintenance plan for the new amenities coming on, so we don't get such a backlog in the future. This is truly our catch-all account. Many of you are familiar with this, is this is the account that we tap into when there is no money anywhere else and a constituent calls with a complaint or concern, and you say, can you fix this? Well, we go back to Park Reno, and even though we have a really long list of things that we would like to do, we address a lot of the unintended emergency items through this account as well. As we acquire more properties and we make more infrastructure investment, the need to keep this to a certain level becomes even more important so that we maintain our investment. This year, we're looking to renovate seven concession stands throughout the county. This is very, um, important to the conversation we just had with you, that restroom buildings and maintaining them and keeping them up so that the user groups can get full use out of them. We're updating Overlook and Havenwood Park through this account. We're also looking to replace the playground surfaces and pour those rubber surfaces on the rest of the playgrounds that we had identified through the UPR grant. We're also looking to put a new playground system at Fort Smallwood, which is our next regional park to get a large playground. Uh, we do a lot of bridge and culvert repair through this account. We do a lot of tree removal through this account, which is always unanticipated, and in the most recent year is one of our largest expenses. Uh, we do parking lot repairs, uh, we replace goals on fields, we do stormwater, uh, devices, and then just general park beautification and maintenance, um, throughout the year. We're requesting nine-point-one million dollars in twenty-four, uh, and reduce it back to the three-point-four million dollars in the out-years. We do recognize some, um, recovery monies in this account in FY twenty-four, as well as state grants.
Next slide, please. Broadneck Peninsula Trail. The Broadneck Peninsula Trail is a nine-mile trail that will extend from the BNA Trail to Sandy Point State Park. Phases one and two were completed by the department. Phase four was completed by others. Phase three, which is Baydale to Peninsula Farm Road, is underway. Uh, we discovered during construction that there were some unsuitable soils. This results in the request of nine hundred thousand dollars for the construction change. Phases one being five were the last two connections. These are currently in the last stages of design and preparing to go to construction in two thousand and twenty-three. Next slide, please.
Oh, can I ask a quick question on that, on suitable soil? Is, I have gotten a lot of emails on the pace. Does that have to do with the soil situation, and are we in a pause until that is addressed?
So unfortunately, the last major thing that happened was the car accident on Friday and us having to put up the crane. So that was the latest, the and us having to put up the crane. So that was the latest delay. The rains never help us when we're in construction and we're doing earthwork and grading, but we still are still on schedule.
Okay, that's actually very good. Thank you.
Uh, Peninsula Park Expansion. Under this project, the park will reconfigure two existing ballfields, add additional green space, and provide onsite parking to address a safety issue. The fiscal twenty-three allocation will be for the construction of those improvements. In response to comments received during the review period for this project, the department is seeking design and construction money to expand park amenities to possibly include a playground, pickleball and tennis court upgrades, additional walking trails, seating areas, and landscaping. Again, we're asking for one point four million for fiscal twenty-four. Next slide, please. Facility irrigation. This is a multi-year program to install and repair wells and irrigation systems throughout the park system. This request is consistent with previous years and has no changes in the out years. We have extended it to fiscal twenty-nine and again, we're asking for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. Next slide, please. Fort Smallwood Park. Uh, Fort Smallwood Park, the improved beach was opened in twenty-twenty-two. The current work is listed under phase two of the master plan. This work includes the new comfort station with all-season restrooms and a concession stand, a new parking lot, and a new maintenance building for county staff and renovations to upgrade the office space in the barracks to create a new visitor center. Phase two is underway. The comfort stand and maintenance building have been out to bid and construction is scheduled to start in the spring. Uh, we are planning another information session for this project. And then the funding that we're requesting is for the balance of the design and construction money needed to complete the rehabilitation of the barracks. Uh, POS development funds will be used to complete this work. Uh, again, this year, we're asking for three million eighty-eight thousand dollars.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Just while we're here, um, a couple of things. Number one, it's three million, not five hundred thousand for the comfort station. That's what this is costing.
Well, that's a little bit different.
Yeah, it's a lot bigger.
Yeah, this is, I mean, it's bathrooms, showers.
Understood.
It's, that's the picture of what that will look like.
It's going to be beautiful. My next question. Um, how much has prevailing wage impacted the bid on this? Because obviously this is something you have put out the bid since prevailing wage passed last July.
Can I ask David Braun from DPW to answer that question? Because they, they manage the money for that.
Phone a friend.
I didn't realize DPW was here because I got a lot of frickin' questions for you guys.
You want to ask about five hundred first?
No, I'll wait till DPW comes down during their brief.
Good afternoon. Uh, David Braun with Department of Public Works. And I'm sorry, could you repeat the question again?
Certainly, yeah. So prevailing wage legislation passed last July. How much has that legislation impacted the costs for this project in terms of you putting it out to bid?
We are including seven percent of the construction costs in, in our estimates.
Okay.
Um, it, since it only went into effect last July, we don't have a whole lot of experience yet in comparing and seeing what the actual cost has been. Um, so I, I don't know that I have a specific answer for your question, but it's something that we're prepared for in, in the budgets that you see.
Okay, I, and the reason I'm asking is, so when we passed that legislation, I think DPW told us seven to fifteen percent was the ballpark range we should think should be the cost. Um, there are lots of people in the county who talk and I have heard the chatter that you all are actually projecting more like twenty-five percent is what it's increasing the cost of projects. So to hear it be seven percent is a little surprising to me because that's not what I've heard from people who are sort of coming out of the woodwork and saying it's a lot more than that. So.
Well, that, that's something, and I'm sorry, that's something I think that as we get more experience and have more discussions with the contractors, we'll get a, a better feel for that.
Okay, so do you have anything that you can provide to us that shows what you are projecting? Like, I hear what you're saying, but I, I, are there documents that you're putting out? Are there sort of guidance memos or something that you're giving to different departments when you're doing bids? Like, what does this look like in terms of how DPW is telling people, different departments, this is how much this is going to cost? Or build this into your price estimate or something?
Well, those documents basically are all generated by DPW and we're the ones that put the, the contract documents together for all the departments, for the projects that we manage.
Okay.
Um, and we work with the purchasing department of essential services to include whatever is required from the legal perspective of the notifications and the putting it forward. Um, but this, the program spreadsheets that we do that generate the budgets have a line right now still for, um, prevailing wages using seven-point construction and that's what everybody sees when they get that. Our, our intent, to be honest with you, is to have enough experience so that next year, we didn't need to include that as a separate line anymore. It would just kind of be baked in, but I'm not sure we're going to have enough experience yet to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is this building going to be open, like, during day to dawn to dusk when it's built?
Uh, yes, that building will be open because it'll be located in a regional park where we have staff.
Mm-hmm. So my Glen Burnie Regional Park study is really important because I want something like that for my part of the, I, I'm, I'm looking for Howard County facilities in Anarundel County and that looks like a Howard County building, but it's not in my community. So I'm really excited about the Glen Burnie Regional Park study and I hope it doesn't take five years to figure out what we're going to do in Glen Burnie.
Noted.
Sounds good.
All right, we are on page one. We're on the Anarundel Swim Center renovations, which is page one twenty-three in your budget book. Uh, the fiscal twenty-four request is to address the remaining long-term maintenance items, which would be to replace the temp control in the pump room, a new pump, electrical starter panel in the pump room, new waiting pool pump, a main pool backup pump, two backup pumps for the boiler room, and we also need to replace the windows. Turf fields in regional parks. This reflects a refund of unused funds in the amount of seven hundred thirty-two thousand. Next slide, please. Northwest area parks. This is an ongoing multi-year project that is funded by the Video Lottery Impact Aid. The full project list totals three and a half, I'm sorry, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And this year, it's focused on Matthewstown Harmon and it would be to install new lights on the multipurpose field, install ball netting around that field as well. Uh, Lindale Middle School is also in this project and we will be using previous funds to complete that as well as the parking at Queenstown. Next slide, please.
Millersville Park. So many of you are familiar with Millersville Park as the thirty-three acres that was purchased in two thousand and eight using program open space. After the, um, defeat of lease legislation back in the fall of two thousand and twenty-one, the department has pivoted, um, to use the park for the original, um, purchase use and that's athletic fields. So, um, we have been working on multipurpose fields and passive park improvements in the design. Uh, we have re-engaged the public through this design process and created a stakeholders group uh, that is helping us with the initial stages of the redesign. We had a very long first meeting with the stakeholders group on a Saturday, um, where we had great conversations with the communities and the user group uh, in order to talk about the needs of the community and user groups to make sure that we can, uh, balance the future of this park. The money that is in the budget is the balance of the construction money. Um, in order to keep our POS money, which is a state requirement, we have got to move forward, um, with the application and the development. So we've revised our POS application, um, and we are moving forward with the construction on this park. We're hoping that the stakeholders and the county will be on the same page before we put a shovel in the ground.
Next slide, please. Water access facilities. This is a multi-year project to enhance water access opportunities within existing parks that has been extended until fiscal twenty-nine. Greenhaven Wharf has been completed. Galesville Pier is in construction. A feasibility study for a boat ramp at Beechwood has been prepared and was shared with the public. Uh, we have begun the design to install electronic gate access at two current water access points. Uh, this would allow us to eliminate some of those combination locks that are a little bit more challenging for some of our users to use. And then this, again, would make our parks a little bit more accessible. And then the one project that we haven't started is the completion of a Karen Park water access study. Uh, this study is, would be a study of Karen parks that have waterfrontage to determine the possibility for being used for fishing, swimming beaches, paddle-in parks, and other, uh, non-vessel-related water activities. The goal of this project is to expand the idea of water access beyond being limited to vessel-related activities. The request shows a removal of the anticipated funding for fiscal twenty-four as all the work, uh, above can be completed with the previous allocated funds. We did extend the project to fiscal twenty-nine with the standard allocation of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Next is North Anarundel Swim Center Campus. This is the design and permitting of a splash pad at this location is underway. The request for fiscal twenty-four is the balance of the construction money for the splash pad for us to begin the design of a new turf field. So the name of this project has changed to reflect that this is a campus-wide improvement project now and to include the development of a turf field to serve this region.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, please.
Thank you. Um, I'm reading in this, it says new Bermuda turf field.
Yes.
And so it's going to be grass?
Yes.
So it's going to be flooded and wet like our other fields in my community? So it's going to limit use. We couldn't get a turf turf field here? I mean, it's going to be rained out. I mean, the whole goal of trying to get more fields is actually having them allowed to be playing. Randazzo has been flooded the last three weekends or so and I have youth sports organizations that can't actually play. I was under the impression this was a turf turf field. So we got to read very carefully in the notes because this is now grass, which means it will have limited playtime. Will it have lights?
We did include lights as part of the project design.
Okay, but it, it, it won't, it won't, well, whatever, I've said it.
Next slide, Eisenhower Golf Course. So the design of the golf course is still underway. The request in twenty-four is the balance of the construction money needed. Um, because of the cost of this, uh, construction, we've broken this into phases and therefore we will be completing phase one, which is kind of like the ground level, the cart barn, uh, the amenities that are currently at the golf course. The upstairs has a community room and a commercial kitchen. We'll be looking for a partner to complete the phase two, uh, to minimize the cost of the overall building on the county. Um, so what you see in the budget is two million dollars in FY twenty-four with the remainder balance in FY twenty-five, um, for construction of the building.
Hot Sox Park Improvements. The park improvements are complete. The Wilson House located on the site was built in eighteen seventy and was occupied until nineteen seventy. The house is in very poor condition and is in need of further stabilization and rehabilitation. The work of the study is currently underway to determine what those improvements need to be. The request for fiscal twenty-four is for us to complete those efforts, which is six hundred thousand dollars. Next slide, please. Cars Wharf Pier. The wharf has been completed. It is in performance. The feasibility study to provide improved emergency vehicle access is underway. Uh, construction can be completed with the remaining allocated funds. The fiscal twenty-four request is to return funds that won't be needed for this work, which total nine hundred and five thousand dollars. Next slide, please. Odenton Park Improvements. Uh, this is the Gork site. Both phases are currently in construction and we anticipate construction to be completed this summer. The fiscal twenty-four request is for the installation of the field lighting. Next slide, Park Trails Resurfacing Countywide. Uh, we will continue to pave at Quiet Waters and begin repaving and installing trails throughout Downs. For fiscal twenty-four, we're seeking five hundred thousand dollars. This request would fund one mile of trail at Quiet Waters Park and pave a half a mile of the South Shore Trail behind the mall. For fiscal twenty-five through twenty-nine, we will continue to complete trails, repaving, repairs countywide and that extends the program to fiscal twenty-nine at three hundred thousand dollars per year. Next slide, please. Brooklyn Park Community Center. This project includes two phases. The first phase includes the design of park improvements, including an adaptive baseball field. The community center, which is phase two, will begin design this summer. The fiscal twenty-four request is for the remainder of the construction for the park improvements. The design of the community center has been slowed, um, as we're trying to just get a handle on what the building will be and how it will function. And we believe it'll be a smaller version of the Severn Intergenerational Center. Uh, the center will remain in design from fiscal twenty-four to twenty-three and then we anticipate seeking construction money in fiscal twenty-five. And as a reminder, this is located in a high or medium, high-equity area in the county.
Mr. Chair. Can I ask a question about this project? I know it's your district, but I'm curious. Um, so when you all looked at this community center, is there a reason? It looks like you're building something. Is there a reason that we couldn't use vacant space that's there? Would that have made sense to lease space? Like, what was the sort of thought process with it? I'm not trying to zing your, your idea. I just, understanding a little bit about the area. I think there are a lot of vacant opportunities, at least I would think there are up there. So did that not work for what you were looking for?
So this project started several years ago. Um, and it was a partnership with us and the Youth and Family and we were using leftover parkland. Basically, when you go in, the library's at the front, schools on the side.
Okay.
And then where the parking lot sort of dead ends into the park, we were going to put the building right there.
Okay.
Um, that was the location that was selected and then as part of that, we added some park improvements. Uh, the park improvements include like a meditation garden, a new dog park, basketball courts, redoing the tennis. And then we've also upgraded the adaptive baseball field in the back. Board of Ed is also expanding the school at this location. So between schools, park use, it just sort of made sense for the building to be there to create sort of this campus feeling of community services and, and activity.
So just, the idea was to keep it all on property we own, just build something new? Okay, got it, understood.
And Ms. Madam Vice Chair, I'll see your light before I make a comment.
It'll be nice to have something new and purpose-built in, um, the north part of the county, so thank you.
Uh, can you pause Rexon Park real quick? Just wanted to get a temperature control from, uh, the council. Uh, did you all want to take a fifteen-minute pause right here, uh, to go on the back there and take? I know some of you all are hungry as well, we got a long back there. So I just wanted to pause us for fifteen minutes. Are you all good with it? If not, we'll go forward. Okay?
We're sort of close.
Oh, she's like halfway, she's still got like forty pages.
So the last, like, sixteen pages, we don't even discuss them. They're just there because they're listed on the list. So we just sort of blow past those. It's just pictures. If somebody had a question about something that we're not discussing today and then we roll right to the C-class. I mean, we're doing sort of, and I left time for questions, but you're meeting.
It still sounds like thirty, forty minutes, though. Like, of what's left?
You have ten projects. We have ten projects left to go through.
Okay, we'll get through the ten projects and then we'll pause for fifteen minutes. Okay?
Next slide is, uh, West County Swim Center.
So glad you got to that one.
I thought that's why you were pausing. So, uh, this project is designed, to design and construct an aquatic center for the west planning area. Um, after the January thirtieth public meeting, the department is reviewing alternative locations that have been submitted both by the community and by, um, Councilwoman Smith, that, uh, we are doing our due diligence to look at these other alternatives. Uh, but this is a decade worth of work and has been identified both in our two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and twenty-two as a need. Um, it's a unique project in that we only have forty-two facility development projects that are identified in the LPPIP and this is one of three that marks all the needs, demand, proximity, and, and equity. Um, so the need isn't going to go away regardless of whether the location is finalized or not finalized during this budget, uh, process. What we're asking for in the budget is the funding to finish the, uh, the design and concept work and then a placeholder in FY twenty-six to make a commitment to the construction.
Deal Community Park. This project is underway and proposes the design and construction of a new community park on the twelve-acre former Wellens property on Maryland two fifty-six. Um, the request that we're asking for is the remainder of the construction money so that we can place this out to bid this summer. ADA Compliance. Uh, we have no request for fiscal twenty-four as the funding for twenty-three will be used to complete the accessible routes, bathroom repairs, and other miscellaneous accommodations that are associated with Lake Waterford. And fiscal twenty-five, we anticipate asking for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars as this project will be a multi-year reoccurring project. We will seek those funds throughout fiscal twenty-nine. Next slide, please. Odenton Library Community Park. This is a passive park project located on approximately one point three acres next to the library parking lot. Uh, due to affordability, this project was broken down into two phases. Phase one remains in design through fiscal twenty-three. We are asking for the, the construction money for phase one and design money in this. We are asking for the deconstruction money for Phase One and design money in this budget request. In fiscal twenty-five, the Phase Two will remain in design, and there will be a future funding request possibly in fiscal twenty-six. Program open space development money will be used to facilitate this construction. Jug Bay Environmental Wetland Sanctuary. I'm sorry, Jug Bay Environmental Educational Center. This project will serve to expand Jug Bay's capability to provide educational, environmental, ecological research and habitat stewardship. The master plan for this was completed under P four-two-five-five-one. We have begun the design of the Phase One improvements, which are the campgrounds and the parking lot. In fiscal twenty-four, we are requesting the balance of the construction money to build the cabins, bathhouse, campgrounds, and the parking lot. And we also want to begin the design of Phase Three, which includes the pier improvements, kayaks, storage areas, and trails. And in fiscal twenty-five, we will begin the construction of Phase Three. Next slide, please. Quiet Waters Park Rehabilitation and Improvement.
Quiet Waters Park Rehab. So, this is a, a regional park over in Annapolis. In FY twenty-three, we anticipate continuing the renovations that were identified in FY twenty-two, moving them into construction as well as the stream repairs. In FY twenty-four, we'll continue with the renovations and complete the gully repair. The fire protection system for the visitor center is under design, and a portion of the twenty-four funds will be used to complete this work. The structural improvements to the visitor center are also in design. This project includes a name change and a description change to include the future development of the retreat area. There is no money in our budget request right now for the development of the retreat.
Mayo Beach Park Repairs. This was the conditional assessment report that was completed and indicated five million dollars' worth of repairs. We have started the repairs out there. The next round of construction will be for the new maintenance building. We had a public meeting in April to discuss that. And then we have no further requests as that shift completes the repairs at this location. Tanyard Springs Park is for the development of a brand-new park located on fourteen point six-nine acres off of seventy-one eighty Heritage Crossing. Design continues in fiscal twenty-three, and we're requesting construction funding in fiscal twenty-four. Bacon Ridge Severn Chapel. This project plans and develops the hundred-and-fifty-acre former foreney property as an expansion to the Bacon Ridge site. This project does reflect the name change to be more reflective, we're locally calling that now, which is Severn Chapel. And we're asking for the balance of the construction money based on current estimates. The improvements there would be for the repair of a homestead interpretive area focused on the tobacco barn, storage for kayaks and equipment for the Rangers, landscaping updates, construction of equine hitching and care areas, and that public meeting is tonight. Up next is South Shore Park. Again, this is twenty-two point nine-two of undeveloped park area that's located along General's Highway. This site seems best suited for the development of two full-size multipurpose fields. This park development would include design permitting and construction of basketball courts, indoor and outdoor fields, a fieldhouse, playgrounds, parking, frontage improvements that'll also serve as a rest stop for South Shore Trail. And this is one of those parks that was an unused facility, so we'll take something that's underutilized and turn it into a much-needed facility. The project will remain in design in fiscal twenty-four, and we're requesting construction money. And this project is partially funded by a state grant. Trail Spurs Connections Countywide. Again, this is an ongoing multi-year where we take our existing mainline trails and we figure out how to connect them to attractors along the trail. The cost presented is based on the first five years of the project for the design and then acquisition of right-of-way, followed by construction, and then we repeat. We are seeking two million five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for fiscal twenty-four. This reflects the one point five million dollar federal grant plus a one million dollar in state grants. So, we're defunding the county pay-go here. The grant also covers the anticipated funding request for the out-years, and we extend the project until fiscal twenty-nine.
Next slide is Crownsville Memorial Park. Obviously, the county has taken over the ownership of Crownsville Memorial Park. The work in the budget includes the master planning, the design permitting, and construction of a passive and active recreational amenity. The work is definitely being phased in as this is a large project. The first phase would consist of just securing the site and determining the areas that can be used immediately for recreational use. The conditions assessment of the building is currently underway by the Department of Central Services. The design of the memorial on the backside of the property has already begun, and DPW is selecting a consultant to lead the master plan and community engagement efforts on the property in its entirety. The master planning for the recreational use should be completed during this phase. Phase Two would then be the design, the permitting, and the construction of permanent campus improvements, which would result in newly acquired land and making it an operational facility. This is all state-funded.
Lake Waterford Park. This is our only new project this year. This project will fund the design and construction of improvements to Lake Waterford Park. Again, this is our regional park that serves for adaptive. It's our adaptive location in the park system. So, what we want to do this year is we want to add and expand the play. So, we want to add a power court, a roller court for power chair hockey. So, that's a new amenity that we currently don't have online. We would expand the parking, stormwater management, and we would have to do some other site improvements. Again, this is consistent with the goals of the twenty forty Plan LPPRP and the Pasadena Marley Next Small Area Plan. Preliminary work was completed under a previous study. And again, this work is to provide more accessible amenities in this park, provide additional recreational opportunities, and to replant some of the lost forest that we've had due to disease of the trees. Again, we don't believe that there will be an operating impact until fiscal twenty-five when the park would go, when this new area would come online. Again, this is an existing park with existing staff, so we're anticipating that we may need one additional person to help with that and a slight increase in operating expenses for lighting, trash pickup, porta-pots, and cleaning supplies.
Okay, Mr. Volkey.
All-season air-supported court enclosure for tennis courts. Tell me about that.
So, that was one of the things that we were thinking about doing due to
I like it.
Well, due to affordability.
Yeah.
That piece has been scrapped to Phase Two. So, we would have to come back for that in the pickleball expansion. But initially, when we want to place the new court, we have to remove or relocate a couple of things.
Okay.
So, that was the thought, was that we could sort of meet our indoor need because we still don't have an indoor tennis facility. So, that was an option for us to come up with something to fill the gap.
I remember having this discussion when we were talking about that facility, so, thank you.
And then if you just skip the next sixteen pages down.
Yeah, I just had a quick comment. I am thrilled, even though this is not the fifth district, I'm thrilled to see the roller court for power chair users. There was a gentleman who came out to the fifth district budget town hall who referenced this, so to see it in the budget is outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
So.
C-class?
So, you have two C-class.
I just got two.
It's, it's such a, I mean, what do you all want to do?
I have a question.
Sixty-two.
Please.
Slide sixty-two.
Okay. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna ask a question. In the park improvement or renovation category, the nine million, is there any potential for getting the remnant, South Gate Park, looked at as the Old Mill community is getting a middle school? I know the middle school, I'd like to see some coordination between AACPS and the county in not just the way we're accommodating the roads, but also the leftover remnant park there, which has basketball courts, tennis courts, a little parking area, playground. In driving there, it, it doesn't seem like there's a coordination between the school and the remnant park as of yet, and the community is a little up in arms about the new traffic pattern. So, we, I, I would like us all to work together to make sure that that new county-owned school building and remnant park and roadway all makes sense for the community, and they're not left with a forgotten little triangle of a park. And they're very vocal.
Yes.
So, I couldn't leave this meeting without having this conversation.
As a reminder, there is a cemetery located out there that will decrease the amount of actual recreational area that's part of this work. So, sort of what's left over on the left side of this, I'm sorry, the right side of the site is what we would be able to use for recreational. I think we have a
There's already recreation there that's remaining.
Yes.
But it's not cohesive with the new school, and it's not very well maintained. It could use some love, as I like to say.
All right, and then? Nope, so, real quick, the C-class projects is found on page twenty-four and thirty-four of your capital budget. And there is, it includes the agricultural preservation program, which is the mouth and county local programs, which is the first one. We have no request for fiscal twenty-four. Again, we have a request for out-years. Rural Legacy, which is on page thirty-four, is for the Rural Legacy Program to protect natural resources with the focus on stream buffers. Again, we have no request for this year, and we've only placed money in for the out-years. And that completes P and C-class.
That is truly the end of our presentation.
Okay. Any additional questions, Ms. Roden?
I just have two, hopefully relatively quick questions. The first one is actually one that came from a constituent about cemetery maintenance. And it's funny, you just brought up cemeteries, but I think the one that I, they were specifically asking about is at General's Highway Park. But apparently, there are other cemeteries on, you know, on park property. It sounds like you've heard about this.
Not necessarily General's Highway, but we do have a cemetery that's in Matthewstown Harmond's and a couple of other locations. And we do general maintenance of like cutting the grass and just sort of keeping them clean. That's sort of the extent of what we do at the cemeteries. I think Tanyard also has a cemetery as well, so we have a couple.
Okay. Do you mind if I ask my next question? The second question was about Quiet Waters Retreat. And I just wanted to clarify that the, you know, obviously, this project has been turned upside down. But as part of the project, there had been ADA trails, a restroom area, and a pavilion, and that is all, was that all lost with? Okay, so that was part of
We're gonna go back to the planning stages. Unfortunately, when we lost the partner, we lost a lot of infrastructure investment. So, we can't just come in and do the park improvement side without having that investment in the infrastructure. So, we will be creating a stakeholders group and going back to the planning stages to see what will the future development on the Quiet Waters property be.
Okay, thank you. I couldn't remember if that was, those improvements were coming with the partnership or whether that was county-based, but thank you for clarifying.
Mr. Chairman.
Annie? Madam Vice Chair.
I'd like to ask a, a question about the Severn Danza master planning process and what you think that looks like, what you think that timeline looks like, is the community going to be involved? The local development council that is in their catchment. What can you share at this point about master planning for that park expansion?
So, with that being part of the fiscal twenty-four effort, it probably won't get underway until the end of this year. There would be some reaching out to you as the councilwoman to determine which community organizations should be represented. Typically, we try to include the youth organization, the HOAs that are in the immediate area, and then we try to pick up some just members at large. And then we sit down and we have a conversation about what the park can sort of hold, what the vision should sort of be for that area. We come to the meeting, we present some general ideas to just start the discussion. We did a charrette for Millersville where we had the people in that stakeholders group come up and put post-its on the board to tell us what it is that they wanted. We take their feedback back, we massage it, we come up with more concepts, we send that back to the stakeholders group, we meet with them again. Hopefully, we get to a consensus, and then we open it up to the much larger group for a much more broader public engagement. So, it'll probably take about a year to go through that process.
A year from July one?
A year from, well, July one would be us sending the request to DPW to start, to hire the consultant, to get the consultant on board, and then for us to start the process. I would say probably the, this time next year, we'll be talking about what the next steps would be for that park.
Okay. We'll have a conversation offline, thanks.
That being said, we will recess for fifteen minutes, and we will start back up. I have one oh nine, so we'll come back at one, one twenty-five. Is that fine? Yeah, so even number, we're solid.
Is this our lunch break?
Yeah.
15 minutes.
It's like school, Lisa.
Yeah. So since we have a quorum out here, we're going to move forward. So please, Department of Transportation, the floor is yours.
My name is Sam Snead. I'm the Transportation Officer or Director of Transportation for Anarunno County. And I'm going to defer to the Office of Budget to put you on the right page for our presentation.
Thank you. Good afternoon, darling and gentlemen, the Budget Office. The Office of Transportation's budget begins on page 172 of the proposed budget book.
I want to direct you to our first slide. In the bottom right is an important seal that we developed as part of our commitment to equity, diversity and inclusion. We started a committee, which is chaired by staff members, because we have an overall commitment to equity, diversity and inclusion through the Transportation Office for Anarunno County. Next slide, please. So our office has multiple functions. We are transportation planning arm. We also operate the bus system for Anarunno County. We manage capital projects in partnership with DPW and Reckon Parks and also Central Services. We also have a grant management function. We apply for grants. We manage grants. We implement grants, whether they're planning-based or capital-based. And we're also an office of innovation. We work with OIT to implement new technologies to improve our transportation system. So this year, we've been working really hard to implement our Move Anarunno Plan. As a result, we recently got past the Walk, Walk and Roll Anarunno Plan unanimously. Thank you very much, Council, for that. We also had endorsed the Vision Zero Plan, which is now moving to the implementation phase, which will create a safer Anarunno County. And we are in the process of developing the Transit Development Plan. Later this fall, we'll be presenting that to Council for approval. And that's our five-year strategic transit development plan. We've also completed a number of state studies and plans and regional plans, as well as some corridor studies. We're studying areas to add potential transit in the future. And we've developed a ZEB plan, which is a transition plan to a more clean fleet. And we're working now on an implementation plan so that we can develop a strategy to move forward in purchasing different types of fuel-type vehicles transitioning to hybrid and electric vehicles. We have some ongoing studies, such as the Brooklyn Park Mobility Study and the Safe Routes to School Study, which really will improve mobility for pedestrians in certain specific areas of the county, but also at certain schools throughout the county. Next slide, please. So our bus network growth, this is one of the areas where I really want to give kudos to my staff. So, our bus network growth, this is one of the areas where I really want to give kudos to my staff in our best bus network growth this year. We've made a lot of operational improvements and operations management improvements that has caused a lot of our ridership to grow out of pandemic dips and actually increase past the numbers that we had established previous to the pandemic. So, as you can see, we've increased the riderships on some lines as much as one hundred ninety-three percent. In others, we've established new lines, so there's now connectivity where there wasn't connectivity before. As you can see, in the prior bus network map in 2019, we really had no north-south connectivity. But now, we have a gold line extension that runs north-south in our county, all the way from the light rail station down to parole transit center. And then, we also have a new Crofton Express Route that runs on the western side of the county, down to the southern portion, bless you, for the parole transit center and greater Annapolis access. Next slide, please. I want to direct you to this slide because previously, we had one micro-transit call-and-ride zone in South County, which essentially allowed people to traverse a pretty big geographical area in South County. But we also started a new micro-transit zone in North County. And that provides a pretty good transportation on-demand for folks. They can pick up their phone and call and schedule a trip to be transported into the dark-blue zone you see above. And there's also potential for other zones to be served by micro-transit in future budgets. And I just wanted to show you here what potential ridership could be based on the density of those different areas within the county. Next slide, please. These are the new apps that we've brought on over the last eighteen months. We have the Pingo App, which allows people in South County to schedule a trip online through their phone or a relative or caregiver. We also will be establishing the Passio App. People will be able to see their bus in real time within the next month. And that really gives riders confidence and will, I think, effectively increase ridership because they trust the system. We also added Wi-Fi to our fixed route buses, which is coming on within the next week or so. And we're also going to link these to the Transit App and Google Maps so that people could see those live feeds in those other apps as well. And that's important because they'll be able to transition from our transit over to other transit systems as well, such as MTA, RTA, City of Annapolis, and whatever linked transit system operates within those applications. Next slide, please. One of our big projects that's funded by TIFF and earmark funds is the Odenton Mark Project. This is a marquee project for the county because it condenses parking into a structure. And the design itself is suited to a contact-sensitive solution approved by the Odenton Community. And it allows for development to happen around the site, such as housing and mixed use. So, it's a really important project for the county to fill in the dead space currently that has a lot of asphalt parking lots and really condense the parking into one area. There are also other amenities in the structure, such as bike parking and bus stop access as well. Next project. We also have in the budget our Transportation Operations Facility. Our present facility is the future site of a TOD, which will create housing and mixed-use development in the northern portion of the county. So, we have to create a new site for our buses to be held, washed, maintained, and for us to operate our system. So, that will be located, hopefully, in the northern portion of the county as well, where the majority of our services lie. Next slide, please. And I'm going to transfer it over to my Planning Administrator, Brian Ulrich, to go over the next few capital projects.
Brian Ulrich, Planning Administrator. Just wanted to highlight a couple of these multi-year projects. The list that you see here is in the appendix, but I just wanted to highlight them. This is Sidewalk Bike Way Fund. And you can see the list of projects there that we're working on and the cumulative costs so that, you know, those multi-year projects, they show, I think this is six fifty, well, this year is, or twenty-four is proposed at a million, but then six fifty after that. So, you get an idea of the cost of the projects that are under that umbrella and where that money is going. And several of these are already underway, and then the ones at the bottom are new. So, these will kind of be what we're working on for twenty-four. Again, same thing for transportation facility planning. That money's got a certain amount each year, but these are the specific projects. Again, first four are active projects that we'll be finishing up. And then, the next four are anticipated projects to begin. And then, again, pet improvement, SHA, these are the sidewalks on state roadways that we combined with SHA to put in, again, another multi-year fund with the dollar amount. And these are the specific projects. Again, two fourteen should be under construction next fall. Slipped to November, but could be later, but we'll see. But, and then, the rest of them are in some phase of design or planning. And then, I'll turn it back to Sam. This one, Ridge Road? Ridge Road, this was requested by Officer Planning and Zoning. I know DPW hasn't gone yet, but they'll be, they have proposed a project on, is it Solly Road? That's not Solly Road. It's the other one out there. Marley Net, that's it. Thanks, thank you. So, that had a lot of development, as you know, come in, and it's kind of a patchwork of road improvements. And so, their project is to kind of clean up and fill in the gaps. This is kind of trying to get ahead of this same issue on Ridge Road out near the airport with industrial development. There's patches of proposed development, but let's do it upfront and get the road improvements kind of consistent all the way through, instead of having to come back and clean it up, which I know there's a lot of problems come out with Marley Net. Now, it's Sam.
So, the next project we have is the Reva Shared Use Path, which will provide better connectivity along the Reva Road Quarter. Our next project is the BWI Trail Extension and Baybrook Connector. This project will provide better connectivity, but also along the Belgrove Road Quarter in the Pumphrey area, it really increased safety. We've had over one hundred twenty-five accidents along the Belgrove Quarter. And we've had six pedestrian bicycle accidents within the last five or six years. So, increasing connectivity and safety is vital in this particular quarter. Next slide, please. And the last slide we have is Safe Routes to Transit. And this is actually based on a study done by BMC. They created a list of projects throughout the county that could create better pedestrian and bicycle access to transit. And we can incrementally work on these projects over the next several years in order to create that better connectivity. So, they'll have a dual purpose. It'll create better pedestrian and bicycle connectivity, but also allow people to shift modes over to transit now that we have a more built-out transit system within our county. Thank you very much.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you. I'm very excited to see a particular sidewalk project listed in here. We have the established cost and then the cumulative estimated cost for Cypress Creek to Newtunsee. Would construction be in a year? I know that there was a lot of work that needed to be done in this area.
I cannot guarantee construction to be completed within a year, but you mean to begin within a year?
Yes, we'll go with that.
Okay. What are your thoughts on that?
It will not begin within a year. Sorry. You know how these projects are?
Yes.
If it gets funded, then, you know, first stage is design, then there's three phases, you know, PI. This will be through the state process presumably.
Understood.
Could be ours. Either way, still same way, kind of three phases of design. It takes, this is a small section, so maybe it takes, you know, twelve months, eighteen months. And DPW can probably give better numbers for the process and how long it takes for these designs. And then, got to acquire right away, which is, can be another year, depending on how much you got to acquire. And then, the third year would be construction. So, and this is, that was a relatively short segment, so I do think it could be done on a year. But again, it depends on when in the season they start.
Perfect. I appreciate that. And if I may ask one more question, and then I will be done with this department. I really appreciate you, Mr. Snead, for working with us on a trash issue at a bus stop. This particular one has been an ongoing issue, and we understand that there may be an identified business or location that should be responsible for cleaning it up. You all have graciously done it. But in order for you to continue to do something like that, you would need a maintenance budget. What would a maintenance budget look like to go out and empty trash at the transit stops?
So, in this past year, we've didn't have signs at any of our bus stops. And we've built about close to three hundred throughout the system. Not all of our bus stop sign locations have trash cans, but some do, like the one you mentioned. And in this year's budget, we've requested about a hundred thousand for maintenance of those stops, just to have someone constantly going out emptying the trash. If there's an issue such as someone running into a bus stop, we can replace the bench, and we can have those on-call staff. To be honest, we have nine professional staff, and I have, some of my professional staff actually go in the field to do these things because we don't have a maintenance budget. And they really do literally get their hands dirty in order to make this county a great place to use transit and not have trash, you know, kind of around our bus stop locations.
Thank you. Please extend my appreciation for whoever in your department went out there. It is appreciated by me, and I know the community.
Sure. Thank you. Mr. Volken?
Thank you. Similar question to Councilwoman Fiedler. So, the project along Fort Smallwood Road, the one seventy-three pedestrian improvement, SHA project, I've been hearing about that for a lot of years. I mean, that's been out there for a long time. Any idea when that's going to start seeing some progress that people can see? Let me put it that way.
I might have to defer to David for the specific numbers.
He doesn't have to come up.
We do have an updated LOA with the state to kind of take the agreement currently from design all the way through to construction. So, I think, and I'm trying to remember, it's about, is it thirty or sixty, somewhere in there, design stage? So, we're still a little ways away from seeing anything in the ground. And there's a certain number of agreements we have to get through. So, this is one that the state is doing the work, and we're kind of participating in the funding. So, a lot of it is on their timetable, which we've been trying to push them on. As you can see, a lot of our projects, trying to push them to accelerate some of that stuff.
Ask a quick follow-up?
No, please.
Are you noticing any difference between the old administration and the new administration at the state level in terms of their willingness to move things forward?
I don't, I haven't noticed any difference. They were always willing, as far as working together, it's kind of, you know, they're even bigger than we are and a bigger bureaucracy, and carrying it down from the top to the bottom is what, and everybody's got projects and a bunch of different things. So, it just takes time for whatever reason.
Okay.
And I don't think you'd see the difference in transition until after a little bit of time.
Later.
Because some of the appointments just fill positions, to be honest with you. So, it may take a little bit of time.
Can I ask one final question?
No.
Then I'm done. Same topic. So, knowing that the new Rivera Beach Library is almost done there, they're looking, hopefully targeting the fall, what if any impact will this project, when it starts going, have on that? Are you going to build out the sidewalks in that area as part of what you're doing with Rivera Beach? And I don't know if you know this answer or not, but then, it just wouldn't make sense to like make that nice and then have to rip it all up again.
Yeah, I don't think there's any sidewalk as part of the DPW project because they knew this part was coming on the one seventy-three side. So, they left that piece out. There is going to be some tie-in with like where the drainage comes in. But as far as, it should, again, transition and tie into where the sidewalk stops with the county library project and then extend up to the Sunset Park. Yep.
So, I do got a question. Madam Vice Chair, did you have a question?
I do, but you can go first.
For H five-nine-zero-five-hundred, is that one of yours?
Yes.
The phase, can you describe that project?
So, this project's only at about thirty percent design. So, we have the basic alignment, but we have to do extensive community engagement to figure out exactly which project elements will be included, whether that community wants lighting, trees, seating, crosswalks, sidewalk expansion. That's the next stage, is really community engagement to see what the community wants there. It's not at the point in design where we've made critical decisions about what exactly is going to be along the quarter. But the quarter's been generally established, essentially aligned on the map really, before we start engaging the community about it more.
So, how involved is this program, is that project with, you're familiar with Greater Baybrook Alliance and their efforts?
Yes. So, the Greater Baybrook Alliance brought the project just before the point of design where we are now. And we're taking it over and engaging the community from there to see what these two project segments will look like. So, it really hasn't had that county engagement. Really, it's been run by that nonprofit up to this point. But now, it'll be owned by the county.
Okay. Is there a portion that they are still funding from the state money that goes into that connector?
Not at this time. Based on my understanding, these two segments, they've designed with the grant funds that they utilize. And now, we're going to use the grant funds that we won in an application to continue design and engage with the public.
And I think Phase Two of that is the part that goes from...
Nursery Road Light Rail?
Yes, to the BW, I mean, to the city line, right?
I'd say a little before the city line.
Okay.
The majority of the projects, really those Belgrove Road improvements, we have a lot of safety issues on that road. As I said before, about one hundred twenty-five accidents, over fifty involving injuries, and then six involving pedestrians and bicycles.
Okay. All right. Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can we go back to our sidewalks and school-to-community connectivity project? I've been talking about some of these corridors since school funding took place. So, what do you think our sidewalk connections will be in place by the time the schools are open? Yes? You know, I ask it all the time. I mean, I don't want to have another meeting, but...
For the record, DPW said yes.
Yes, David Braun, Department of Public Works. The series of sidewalks around both new schools that we're working on with them and around Old Mill Middle School are still on track to be in place when school opens in twenty-four.
Great. Further down is the New Cut Road, I mean, the same, the same answer?
Same, yes.
Okay. And then, the Grover Road connection with the new high school, I believe that sidewalk stops and doesn't, is that going to continue on down Grover Road to scoop up?
Yes, we, I think, we're still studying on how far down it's going to go.
Because there's a whole other neighborhood back there.
But it'll connect to, from the school to where the existing crosswalk or sidewalk comes out to the road. We'll get all that connected, yes.
Okay. I have a lot of, you know, as school is in, all these connections are in my district. And creating a safe, walkable environment will, one, cut down on cars. But, two, Grover Road and even New Cut are going to see Grover Road as a big speedway through. But we also have, I think some of y'all probably got an email about the other Old Mill Boulevard project with a community that's pretty vocal about what's happening there. I have said all along, we need to just make sure that we're doing what's best for the common good over there. That area is changing dramatically with the placement of the school and the opening up of the road. So, my last question would then move to, can you tell me a little bit about the multimodal planning study for the Glen Burnie Town Center? What is that?
So, this would be similar to, we recently did a parole mobility study in association with the... in association with the updated town center plan. And my understanding was that OPZ was looking at updating the Glen Burnie Town Center plan. And so, this would be kind of a transportation component of the Glen Burnie Town Center. Kind of look at all modes and kind of zoomed in region plan for the town center.
And we've also, we're currently working on the Brooklyn Park Mobility Study. So, this is in the same vein as that as well, really engaging the public about what their connectivity and safety needs are.
Okay, because we are working with SHA on a, you know, the Glen Burnie Town Center is a crossroads of two state roads. So, we are working in the town center for some additional, an additional crosswalk with SHA. I assume you're aware of that.
Yeah.
It hasn't, I don't know that it received a full multimodal study, so I hope it doesn't muck everything up for...
No, this would be a much larger area.
Oh, a larger area, not just the actual...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. When we talk about the town center, I, it's a larger, okay, that's cool. Exciting, that's good. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much for all of the things you're working on, lots of good things. I just will give a shout out to the Forest Drive Safety Study. I know a lot of people in my district are very excited about that. You mentioned improvements or a shared use, shared use path for Reva Road. And from looking at the map, it looks like it would go under 665. And so, I'm curious, I know that, I feel like I've heard somewhere a talk of just improvement to that whole intersection. And I'm wondering if that is, if that is true or anything you know about that?
There's nothing active to the interchange. There's been thoughts and ideas for years and I guess the cost of that has kind of delayed any kind of change to that interchange.
Okay.
One of the things that you'll notice in the planning study, if I can find it, it may not, Reva Town Center Boulevard, so one of the things we wanted to look at is maybe if you can extend sprule over to kind of, the road is through the Town Center Boulevard in between Festival and like Forest Plaza. Maybe that can provide a local connection where you wouldn't have to spend fifty million dollars on the interchange. Again, that's a lot of money, but we're just trying to see what other things could be done.
Sprules, I think I can't exactly picture it. It's one of the roads back in sort of the, like there's the hotels and the industrial park and there's some new townhouses back there. Okay.
Yeah, so, this study would look at, you know, are there other things we can do other than blowing up that interchange?
Okay.
To help the situation.
Okay. Can I ask just a couple more, both hopefully quick? The first one is about the 97 Express that I saw on the map and you briefly mentioned. But I'm just curious, first off, I'm glad to hear that that is on your radar. I think that that's, you know, will be, will be very helpful as our, you know, the population in our area continues to grow, connecting, you know, those parts of the, those distant parts of the county, you know, with, you know, something other than just, you know, single, mostly single passenger cars. So, that's really great that that's in there. But express does that, I mean, that usually means like not a whole lot of stops on the way. But I'm curious, will there be, or do you have any idea about, will there be stops along the line or will it be just end to end?
So, this is a project that we mentioned because it went under study by BMC. In terms of implementation, it's a project that could be implemented by MTA or RTA or perhaps in the future, in a future budget year, our county. But this would be an express bus with stops in the northern portion of the county, almost acting as a quasi-rail, but it's really a bus that stops at key parking ride locations in the southern portion of the county to give greater access for those in the north to the south and vice versa. It would mostly traverse along Route 97. And this type of project is best suited to be implemented in future years because we have a state-funded TSMO project that will allow for flex lanes along Route 97 within the next two or three years. And the hope is that an express bus could traverse along the flex lane, especially during peak hours. Really encourage people to essentially see the traffic from the express bus that they're taking from north to south county or vice versa. So, that's the concept behind the study that BMC completed on our behalf.
Okay, thank you. And then, just one last question. And this is about the parole transit center. I don't think I saw it in your presentation, or did I miss it? Or is that actually maybe not under your umbrella?
No, the parole transit center didn't have any substantial changes in budget. So, we didn't include it, we only included new items or items that had substantial changes in our presentation. But it is within the budget book and it's on pace to break ground. We're hoping with all lease agreements coming into place, we have, with several meetings about that, hoping it'll break ground within the next, how many months, David? By the end of this calendar year.
Fantastic, awesome. Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. I just, going back to the pedestrian improvement, the sidewalk on, between 214 and Route Two, I'm sorry, yeah, on 214, between Two and Mayo Road. Do you have, first off, thank you, it's a wonderful addition. I've seen the students firsthand walking along that road and it's kind of terrifying because they're in the woods even at some points. So, I'm very grateful to see this in the plans. But do you have a timeline on that that, you know, just roughly, I'm not going to hold you to a firm date, but...
We do have specific timelines we can share. I know that construction was supposed to start in September, but it got moved to November just recently. So, and we're going to put a flyer out, or SHA is going to put a flyer out, so we can share that. I'll share the timeline with you.
That would be wonderful and I'm happy to also share the flyer in my constituent newsletter as well.
Yeah, and we are actually working with some students from South River High School and some kind of other projects for their schoolwork. So, we were going to kind of use them as legwork to get out to the community.
Oh, that's awesome. I love it. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I know, Department of Aging.
Office, I am the Budget Analyst for the Department of Aging and Disabilities. Their budget can be found beginning on page 227 of the proposed budget book. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the Director for the Department Presentation.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman, Madam Vice Chair and Honored Members of Council. For the record, my name is Carissa Kelly, Director, Department of Aging and Disabilities. And I have with me today Joelle Ridgeway, she is the Deputy Director, and Wendy Kerswell, our Fiscal Manager at the Department. So, I thank you in advance for support of the Department of Aging and Disabilities budget so we can continue to do the great work we do at the Department of Aging. We serve older adults, individuals with disabilities, caregivers, veterans, and anyone interested in planning for their future, and that's just about anyone. Positioning for growth and change, we're the fastest growing part of the population as older adults within this county. We operate twenty-five programs in twenty-three locations throughout the county with programs ranging from, and I won't go through all of them, ranging from resource coordination, Medicare counseling, case management. We monitor the hundred-and-eighteen small, community-based assisted livings within the county. We have hospital and 911 diversion programs. We operate twenty-two nutrition sites throughout the county. And we also operate soon-to-be eight senior activity centers with a senior center network of eight as just one of our twenty-five programs. Our departmental motto is making life better. It's leaving the constituents' lives as we interact with them a little bit better than what we found it. And in 2022, we know that we've made an impact in the lives of over twenty thousand individuals. This past year, we've provided over four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand units of service to the residents of Anarundel County. We remain grateful for the seventy percent of our budget that we receive through the County General Fund. Our state and federal agencies continue to support our services through the Federal Older Americans Act and Maryland Department of Aging state grants that are instrumental to our operations. And FY23, the Department of Aging and Disabilities continue to strive beyond our existing services, expanding the depth of our reach within this community. Innovation is an area that we pride ourselves on and we continue to meet the rapidly growing needs of our residents. Some highlights, we continue to expand our reach through offering new services at the Lula G Scott Community Center, where residents receive a meal, enjoy socializing with others, engage in recreational activities, and have the ability to receive one-on-one resource counseling. Through our state ARP funds, this is through the Administration for Community Living and not the county ARP funds, we've added two bilingual resource navigators to our information and assistance team that are fluent in both Spanish and Korean. These resource navigators have truly immersed themselves into the community, bringing equity to our reach. The Veterans Services Coordination Center has been a success. The Veterans Services Line served over five-hundred-and-twenty-two veterans in calendar year 22, in 2022, rather. And we're excited to continue this critical service through the Department of Aging and Disabilities. We also proudly worked with Arundel Community Development Systems and designated some state grant funding to an eviction prevention program that we continue in order to support older adults who are at risk of losing their homes. Also, our new assistive technology lending library is proving to be a valuable resource to people who need assistive devices. This is available to any age or ability to help them be as independent as possible in their communities. And finally, the Mobile Integrated Community Health Program, or MIC program, this is the partnership with FIRE, continues to be a cornerstone in the improvement of community health. The MIC program was recognized nationally with an award from NACO and most recently presented, I think this past month, as a key presenter at the National MIC Conference. In terms of our future, the Department of Aging and Disabilities continues to push the mission of the department into every aspect of the community. With the support and vision of the, oh, I'm ahead of myself. With the support and vision of our new Secretary for the State Department of Aging, we hope to make Anarundel County an age-friendly community, ensuring that services and physical structures are inclusive and receptive to the needs of older adults improving quality of life. With the support of Adrianne's Group at Core Mental Health Services, we are using state, this is also Administration for Community Living ARP funding, to expand mental health services to older adults. There is definitely a significant mental health need for older adults and very few providers. The existing system with insurance, available providers, access to services, it severely limits those mental health treatment options for older adults. The Department of Aging and Disabilities will continue to eagerly explore funding mechanisms such as our hospital contracts in order to expand services. As you've heard me say before, we are the fastest-growing population in Anarundel County and across the country. Outside of our level service budget, the FY24 budget includes one merit and three county contractual positions in my ask. The merit position to the department will lead the Veterans Services Coordination Center. This position is critical to the mission of the county, to provide services to our veterans and their families and will memorialize the commitment started with this administration to the veterans' community. In addition, this position will help satisfy the recommendation of the Veterans Affairs Commission to have a position specifically for veterans. The three county-funded contractual positions are frontline team members directing and interacting with our public, providing resource coordination. Of the forty-nine percent of contractual, or my department is made up of forty-nine percent contractual employees and of the forty-nine percent, seventy percent are grant-funded contractual. So, I have to function within the ceiling of my grant on static funding that has had little to no change since 1965. So, moving three positions over will give me the ability to merit and cola this part of my, a portion of this part of my workforce that is mirroring the exact duties of their merit counterparts. Moving the salaries will also, to the general fund will also allow the department to serve more people, placing those grant dollars back into the hands of the community in the forms, in the form of resources to address critical needs for assistance. Another, another part of this that is good news is these are fifty percent reimbursable through a program that I participated in since 2015 called Federal Financial Participation, or FFP. And FFP is a method of reimbursement by the Centers for Medicaid and Medicare Services to pay the federal government's share of administrative costs necessary to operate a Medicaid program carried out through an area, agency on aging, of which is our designation here at the department. FFP may be claimed for approved activities that contribute to the efficient and effective administration of a Medicaid program. To be reimbursed, employees cannot be grant-funded, funded obviously because it's coming out of the same pot of money. And we've been actually participating in 2014 and pretty successful with the program to speak to its longevity. And several states have participated in this for decades. This graph represents the FFP reimbursement received by Anarundel County since FY18. So, overall, over that period of time till present, the FFP has been 2.6 million. My expenses, which are salaries, are 2.1 million and the balance back to the general fund is half a million dollars. So, you know, in placing these three reimbursable positions into the general fund, we will just simply grow that number. Finally, we thank the Administration and County Council for the investment in both South County and Arnold Senior Center Activity Center expansion and renovations. Arnold is currently in the design phase and everyone is looking forward to construction beginning in late winter, early spring, calendar year 2024. In conclusion, I look forward to what we as a department have ahead of us as we rebuild and offer innovative ways to support our residents. Thank you again, and I can take any questions at this time.
Thank you. Couple of questions.
Sure.
So, if I understand you correctly, we're going to put in the money, but then we're going to get it back from the feds. So, even though you're looking for this five-hundred-and-some-thousand-dollar increase, it's really only about a $250,000 increase.
And it's, well, for the three positions, so the three positions. And really, I'm just asking for a higher appropriation, basically.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Second question. How closely do you all work with OPZ in terms of new developments that are age-restricted or age-driven developments? And I'm asking specifically because of Brumwells in my district, which is going in close to a senior center that exists already. It's across the street. What if any things can you do to try to connect the two to make sure that that community, the folks over there are going to be served once that goes in? I'm just trying to think about the synergy there with that. I only thought about it because on your slide, talking about age-friendly communities, I started to think that is a hub in terms of an age community, if you will, or an older community that could be tied into that resource.
Yeah, absolutely. And recently, in February of last year, we started providing through Partners in Care, a local nonprofit, rides out into the community. Obviously, you know, in the Lakeshore Plaza, we've got, we've got a lot of different shopping, you know, avenues. But, you know, rides to CVS, rides to this new development. So, we'll definitely be expanding the ability to take seniors from the Pasadena senior activity into the new Brumwell development.
Thank you.
I had to coordinate childcare. My son gets picked up at 2:30. So, I wanted to make sure they were still picking him up. Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you. I don't have any questions directly related to your budget. I just, I have to give you all just my sincere... I just, I have to give you all just my sincere gratitude for the way you've served our residents and the way you respond so quickly and so graciously to some often complicated situations that, that aren't within our control. But you guys are, are my favorite agency. Don't tell anybody else that in this regard. I guess I just said that very publicly, but I just want to say thank you to you and your entire staff. Your team is amazing.
I greatly appreciate that on behalf of my team. They love what they do.
Ms. Rovia?
Thank you. I, I actually just was going to say something very similar to Councilwoman Pickard in that you've jumped in and helped some complicated situations and things that appeared on their face that were going to be just totally horrible, life-changing situations, and then you fixed it. You just fixed it and made people's lives totally doable and allowed people to just go about their lives with some of the services and resources you connected them with. I wanted to ask about, and this might not be under your department, because I know the Bates Center is, you know, a complicated, a complicated facility, but I had been hearing for a while about HVAC problems at the Bates Senior Center, and I'm curious if that's anything, is that under your purview? And do you know?
So was it actually at the Senior Activity Center? Because there's also a housing complex at the Bates Center.
That's what I meant. Oh, I meant the housing, the housing part. Is that under you guys, or is that?
We can follow up and let you know. Um, I remember there being some HVAC work there, but I can't remember off the top of my head, and there's something about your question that's ringing.
Okay, yeah.
They just asked us to close, like, three weeks ago, the senior center part, so they could get a crane and an HVAC in there, so.
Oh, so that sounds like a new HVAC.
Yes, I'm going to guess.
Knocking on wood that that's what it is. Okay.
I'm guessing.
But we can.
We can definitely follow it and get back.
Awesome, thank you.
Ms. Lebeda? Oh, okay. All right. Is that, is that it from, cool, awesome. I know, they were extremely patient. I think that wraps up the, your brief then. You don't have any capital program. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, OIT. We actually have some technical issues up here. Our displays aren't projecting right, just since you're here, might as well throw that in your lap. Oh, no, displays, yeah. I'm just putting that ticket now.
No, it was during record.
No, appreciate it.
Off here. I was just busy troubleshooting. I hadn't even sat down yet.
Good afternoon, Council. I'm Kyle Madden. I'm the budget analyst for the IT department there. Budget can be found on page one sixty-six of your budget book. And we'll give Jack a minute.
Well, he has two monitors, so you know he's tech savvy. He's got two monitors, two computers, yeah, two laptops.
We're going to get this done. All right. For the record, Jack Martin, acting OIT director. So today, wanted to talk about our department, so thank you for the opportunity to talk about our budget request. First, for the organization, for those who aren't that familiar, here's the makeup of our OIT organization, starting with network, where we deal with dust and mobile phones, that's in there, right, with cybersecurity, fiber, network, PEG TV and the cable franchises. In the server group and the help center, also called operations, we've got our call center, we've got desktop support and installation, so new machine installs, server configuration, maintenance, also backups and disaster recovery. In our OIT administration group, we do a lot of things, including procurement, personnel, financial, and budget support. So that's where we kind of keep all the plates spinning in the air. In enterprise application services, we've got new application developments, we actually do software development, work on the enterprise GIS services. We work, we build interfaces for systems, make sure that they're connected and passing data as they should. We work with data migration for new projects, moving data from one system to another, and we also work on database configuration. So we'll set up databases for these systems as needed. Sometimes we do them temporarily for projects while we're migrating from one system to another, et cetera. We have a project management office where we, you know, project management, but also customer engagement, working on requirements, things like that for projects. And lastly, the radio system group. And I just wanted a quick shout-out to the, to the team. I want to thank them for everything that they do. Really have a great staff of dedicated people in IT, so, and it, and it shows, they do a great job.
So, so you did mention cybersecurity.
Correct.
What is your effort? Like, what do you, what do we do when it comes to cybersecurity? Like, is there a team? Is it one person? Is it a, is it a project?
It's, it's, I think it's an approach. Like, we have, it mainly falls on the shoulders of one person, but they're embedded in the network team.
Yep.
But they're, they're involved in most every project. So we get, we get their view on, on pretty much anything new. We take a look at it. They're also very involved in helping to train all of the staff countywide. So we have a, a training that's, that's mandatory that we offer for every user, and we start a new one each year, because they run that. And then recently, I was, talk about it in a little bit, but we've been in fulfillment of the new state requirements that were passed in legislature last year. We are engaged with our Office of Emergency Management and have recently completed some pretty extensive exercises, a planning exercise, as well as some of the emergency exercises. And we have, we pulled the whole, you know, group together countywide, as well as state affiliates, local affiliates and groups that would also have an interest, but, you know, aren't under our umbrella, like libraries, they were there, schools, et cetera.
Okay. Yeah, I was, I was, heard a comment from one of our staff, and she instructed one of our councilmembers to not be a lawyer and just be a councilman up here. So I won't be an IT guy, which is what I am, I'll just be a councilman. So I'll ask you offline. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Glad to know we've got somebody right up there.
Oh, I am.
So our mission, I've shortened our mission a bit recently, but really to get the right tools, technologies, and data to the right people at the right time in the right place. Impplied there is not to the wrong people, of course. To do this, we, we need to be coherent, trusted, informed, and driven to provide great services. So, right off the bat, I wanted to talk about our, our, from an operating standpoint, some language in support of our increase on the operating side. It's really about more, more support across the board. So, over the past, well, let's just start here where the bullets are. We've got more mobile devices in the field. One of the benefits of that is it actually brings employees tools so that they can, it helps them accomplish their work, they're connected to work while they're out in the field. It could potentially be, also be for safety, we know where they are, they have a way to contact somebody. But they're right there with a mobile tool where they can utilize it and put data in while they're working, rather than, historically, they would, you know, do the work and then come back to the office and, and log it. So there's several hours, you know, transition time, if you look at what many of the offices have done historically. So we're really trying to get better tools into the field, connected to the systems that these people are associated with, used day in and day out. We've got about twice the number of applications that we supported seven years ago. So we went from one-twenty-five, which was steady for over ten years at one-twenty-five, we're now at around two-oh-seven. It changes all the time, but, so it's, it's just about twice. So along with that, we've got the procurement and the maintenance needs for each of these applications. There's a lifecycle to them, right? We have to do annual renewals, we have to look at tools that they're running on, we have to look at training needs, we look at, you know, everything associated with that. We need to, for supporting these applications, we've also had increases to those costs, you know, some through inflation and some just through, you know, software costs go up, so they, they never go down. It's just a fact. Also, in, in supporting these applications, because we have more tools, we're trying to put more people out there to support the tools, so that the users of these tools have somebody to go to if they're having difficulty, if they, you know, need to learn something new, if, if they're having trouble connecting, it could be something simple, right? Some of these we're doing with internal staff, some of it with contractor staff, and some of them, we have options for vendor support. So we're utilizing all our options there and finding the best one for each tool. And the management, maintenance, and costs are all centralized in IT. So while you're seeing increases here, one of the benefits, as opposed to some of the county's surrounding jurisdictions, is that all of these costs are contained within IT. Some of the other jurisdictions, you'll find IT costs spread out throughout the entire, you know, every department. And here, they're centralized, so it is right there, so you can, you know, see it and ask questions about it. About half of our operating increase is associated with two line items, body cameras and our work with AWS, which is cloud services. Our cloud technology, our technology drivers, most recently, later on, SaaS services, which are cloud applications for users, we've got cloud servers, which is, you know, moving our applications from internal servers up into Amazon Web Services and utilizing those cloud services for that. Cybersecurity and MFA, of course, always important, as you mentioned. And we have a very sophisticated user base. So as opposed to ten or fifteen years ago, where people were happy with just about any tool that would help them, you know, that they perceived would help them get their job done, people are a lot, they're a lot more savvy now, and they're looking for more, and they know what they value, and they have good input on that. And then mobile technologies, as I mentioned. So the highlights, just picked a few items to talk about briefly for us, the radio system, which is nearly complete. All the towers are in place. It's a sixty-million-dollar-plus project that's coming in on time and on budget. It's really big success for us. A lot of hard work went in there, working with IT, with public safety, police, fire, sheriff, so great effort there. We are working on a new system with aging to try and help them, it's kind of like a CRM for aging customers of our, you know, services. That is very new. It's challenging because the way the aging department is arranged, they have grants, and then they have systems that they have to report on for each of those. So they have many different systems that they're mandated to use already. So we don't want to put another system on top of that and give them another system to use. We want to try to integrate with those systems that they have and make their job easier. So it is a little more challenging than a typical project, but I think it'll be really worthwhile, and it is one of our first big projects in the human services area in, in a while. The old aging system's been around for more than fifteen years, so. PIA system, that's where we put in the public information request capability on the website. That's very well utilized. That involved a lot of the integrations like I was talking about, and we built that in-house. Cybersecurity planning and activities, testing and training, that's always been top on our list. Disaster recovery, this is one of the main benefits of the cloud that we're seeing so far, is the ability to have disaster recovery. So, you know, if you take like a hurricane scenario or something where we were out of power here, we have a generator, say we ran out of fuel, for some reason, we weren't able to run out of, out of here. We have our servers in the AWS cloud, but not just in one location, we're mainly in Northern Virginia now, but we're also looking to have alternate locations somewhere else, like Ohio, where if, if there was something that hit the entire East Coast, we could still be operational, even under those types of conditions. So that's what we're moving towards, and that's what I, what I see as one of the, you know, bigger immediate benefits of moving to clouds, or moving our servers to, to the cloud. Paymentis integration, so this is the online payment system. We've integrated, I think, four systems so far, and we're continuing. We have a list of twenty-five, so we'll be, we'll be working on that for a couple of years, but each one makes, you know, the citizen's life a little bit simpler, one at a time. And we're moving all of our online payments to that one specifically. And then rec and parks applications, we built applications for the childcare, and we're moving into team sports, having a lot of success there. All right, so, let's talk about operating budget. That's good. Move to that.
Do you have a question, Mr. Volkey?
I do. I want to talk about the Workday system. Is this a good time to do that? Okay. So we got an email, sorry, I'm like blowing up up here because there is, somebody's telling us to hire more firefighters. We've gotten like forty emails in a row, that's what's happening. Yeah, it's just buzzing, 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 yeah. They've got that set up. Anyway, that must be some sort of a system. I don't think you all helped them with that. Yeah. So we got an email about twelve days ago, and it indicated that the Workday update, the financial system that was going to replace the Enterprise One system, I guess there had been a decision to not move forward with that anymore. So I want to understand, what was the reasoning behind that, and how much money did we spend on the Workday system that we ultimately are now moving away from? I heard, somebody reached out to me and told me nine million dollars. So I'm trying to understand what happened with that and why.
Understood.
So.
And that number is correct.
Okay.
So that's a question in the auditor questions, and we're working on those now. So, that's correct. So probably five or six years ago, as we were looking at systems, kind of enterprise-type systems in the county that needed to be upgraded, we were looking at, that were, you know, good candidates, the financial system as well as the personnel systems, were both near the top. And in looking at that, we decided that might be a good opportunity to look, you know, potentially at ERPs, right? And, so there's not a long list of possible ERP candidates, and so, in, in reviewing those, Workday was, you know, chosen as a candidate, and they did due diligence on it, they worked with departments to talk about some of their needs, and eventually it was selected, deemed to be the right product, and it was selected and purchased. This past fall, as we're moving closer towards end-to-end testing and working with all the departments, it was deemed that it was not a great fit for the county. It's a very, very strong product, but it was not a great fit for Anarundel County and our specific business needs. In doing so, the decision was made to put the project on hold and then eventually to end the project so as not to, you know, have further spending on it. It was just not the right fit for Anarundel County's business needs, and, so that's where it is now. I think, if you look at ERPs in general, it's well documented that there's probably have, you know, it, it's a seventy-five percent failure rate on ERPs. There's a, it's a very high risk and reward. So with ERPs, you get not just a tight integration from, all the way from the personnel side, you know, over to the financials and budget side, but you get, it's, it's not just integrated, it acts as one system. So you could, you know, theoretically pull a string on one side, you know, that's, you know, has to do with specifics, benefit, or a specific payroll item, and go all the way over to the other side and see how it affects the financials. So everything is very, very tightly integrated. In doing that, it leaves very little wiggle room for anybody who's implementing it. Business processes have to be, you know, very specific. Business processes have to be, you know, very specific to the system that you're buying. I think county's learned a lot, there are a number of takeaways and benefits from it. We have new chart of accounts, we have a tighter scope, we have many export scripts for the data systems that we have, but at this point, we're going to be refocusing on what we have, doing the upgrades that we didn't do in ADP, the personnel side, and Enterprise One on the financial side.
Just a quick, so I, and I appreciate the sort of lessons learned and the takeaways. I think that's an important piece of this. I, I think the question for me, looking at this is, how did it get there, right? How did we end up spending nine million dollars of taxpayer money that, that we're all now saying, well, that wasn't the right thing to do, there's not a whole lot that we got for that? And how do we ensure it doesn't happen again with anything else that we're looking at? You know, because I think this is an area of the county that we have to invest in, we know we have to invest it, we know we have to put money in. And that certainly, I, I'll be candid, I would never have known to ask the question, hey, you're doing this new ERP system, seventy-five percent failure rate, I would have no way to know that. So how do we sort of test for those kind of things on the front end to know what we're getting into when we're appropriating the money, if you have any suggestions on that?
I appreciate your understanding and it's, it's a very good question. Those are the same things that we want to know as well and we are currently putting that together. Thank you.
Okay, please, please proceed, I guess.
Okay. All right, so we, looking at the operating budget. Let's see. Oh, I wanted to talk about, we've got our mission, the key objectives, the major accomplishments. A lot of that I've gone over on the slide, so I thought we'd roll right over into statement of expenditures, the, the specific areas where we have increases. Under contractual services, where we see the biggest increase request, as we've talked about, most of this has to do with the increased number of applications and the support that we're working to provide. Another reason is that there is a lot in that line item. So we have everything from fiber emergency, so if there's a cut, we go out and cover it first and then we look to get insurance or, you know, covered afterwards. But we're paying, we're usually paying first if it's an emergency. We've got contractors for in-house use, that cover application support, that cover, you know, everything, server installation, the whole ball of wax. We've got hardware and software maintenance. So all the hardware we have, in terms of the PCs and everything, as well as the software maintenance on, on all the different applications, we're paying, is paid through there, as well as vendor support. So in, in an area where we're not supporting it ourselves, but we're, you know, we have a subscription service basically to the vendor. Also, all our phone services, so recently, phones have all been brought together under these line items in IT. We also have disaster recovery that I mentioned earlier, AWS, the Amazon Web Services, cloud services, as well as the radio maintenance. So not the, of course, the capital side, but the other side of it where we're paying maintenance on the radio system. As well as, you know, details on those systems. So we have huts that are out in the field where we've got, we've got generator backup and we've got servers inside there. So we've got air conditioning on there and we have contracts for the air conditioning on the huts that serve, you know, the, the towers. So each one, we put in another twelve towers, so we've got, you know, twenty-two now. So each one has a hut with, so it's things like that, that, that bring this line item to where it is. Is there any questions? Thank you. All right. Go over to Capitol. For Capitol program, we have six Capitol projects, four in the general county, two in public safety. The first one is the information technology enhancement area. Where, again, it's, it's kind of a combined, one kind of like our contractual services on the operating side. We have a lot of items that are, most of our, our work is in there. And we have the cable TV and PEG, which is also funded by cable franchises, fiber network work. We've got the wired broadband access, this is a very specific project, just around one set of homes where we're bringing five or two ninety-five homes in South County that haven't had connectivity historically. Public safety radio system, which I was just referring to. There is another two million request in that project. And the, the reason is we have the, the final part, which is kind of the, I'll call it the nitty gritty part of the radio project. We have a hundred and thirty sites that need to be tested for radio connectivity. So we put all the infrastructure in place, it works, we've driven around the whole county, it works. It's, it's still being tested, but it's, it's, it's looking good. But now we have to go into buildings, a hundred and thirty different buildings, schools, you know, houses, locations where many people would gather, so gathering places, things like the casino, et cetera, where we have to go, not just in, but down to the basement, the lower levels, where we're testing to see if the radio works down there. Public safety would, you know, may potentially need to use it down there. It's got to work down there for them. So based on that testing, we then put in repeaters, they're called BDAs, bi-directional antennas. It's, it's kind of like if you got a wireless amplifier in your house. It's somewhat similar, but on a much bigger scale. And so we can put those into areas. Of course, wireless doesn't move well, it's not received well around con, heavy concrete walls and cinder blocks, which of course, most of these locations have. So anyway, they all need to be tested from end to end. We get, we do get public safety support in doing that kind of testing, but it's primarily done by OIA and some consultants. So that is the remaining work there, that will, and we're responsible for the first, in, in the contract with Motorola, we're responsible for the first five point three million dollars worth of those repeater installs. And then whatever's left where we don't have connectivity will fall over to Motorola. So it's based on the, the contract that we have in place today. So.
Adam Voish, chair. Can I ask a question?
Sure, I mean, it can just be a free for all, since I didn't even know that the chairman had left the dais.
So. Where are you in terms of that number, the five point three number? And how much you've spent versus where you need to be?
We're just starting.
Just, okay, so you're not even into that yet? Got you, thank you.
This will likely be multi-year. It, it's a lot of sites, frankly. And the, the testing is, is very systematic. It's very thorough, you know, they, it's a public safety issue.
Understood, so you're at the very front end, all new, everything.
We are, we're, we're coming off of the large infrastructure pieces and testing all, and then testing all of that.
Okay.
Now moving to this, you know, stage. That's why, it's like nitty gritty, I mean, it, it, but, you know, it won't, it won't be a huge success unless all of this works too.
That's right, that's right. It, this is the important piece, but it's also the tedious piece, so.
It is.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, the fire trucks, you know, flying around the road, they'll get great connectivity, but when they get somewhere, they need to be connected as well, right? And then lastly, public safety technology enhancement. This is, is for public safety use, as implied by the name, but for very specific things. Most of these are field oriented, MDCs, iPads and E-Tics related systems for police and fire. Any questions? Do you want me to walk through any of the specific program items, starting on page twenty-nine?
Questions here? Any addition?
I'll take that.
But I'll probably, at, you know, at some point over the next two weeks or whatever, try to get on your calendar just to sit down and talk.
Sounds great.
Long-term stuff. Then we could talk nerd IT language.
I would much appreciate.
All right, well, if, if nothing else, that's it. Any other, I do want to applaud the budget officer, Chris Strombauer, for hanging in there like a trooper, sitting there in the back, I love it. Is there anything else? From any council member today?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. The Anaronda County Council is adjourned until tomorrow, May fourth, two thousand twenty-three, at nine AM, when we will meet virtually to continue to hear from departments on the FY twenty-four budget. Please check the county council website for important information and updates. Thank you all.